Planning Board is now in session for January 7, 2021. I will commence with saying Happy New Year, everyone, even though it didn't always look that way, didn't start necessarily that way. But we are going to claim it. It is going to be a Happy New Year, and we will make it happen. The people will make it happen. So the Planning Board is in session for January 7, 2021, and in an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, the Planning Board continues to host our hearings virtually. Today marks the first hearing for 2021, and it is the 33rd virtual meeting since March 2020. During these continued challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and staff as we continue business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment, I'd like to make a moment to remind everyone of our participation guidelines. Speaker preregistration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits, if any, is required. All participants must preregister, and all materials and exhibits, if any, must be submitted by 12 noon, 12 noon, on the Tuesday before the Planning Board meeting, as shown on the screen, as announced in every single weekly meeting, as posted on our website, and as clearly stated in bold red on our published weekly Planning Board agenda. Registered speakers and presenters can join the meeting via the link provided from the Planning Board office. Online registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may also listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line utilizing the call-in number provided in the email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking, and please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in a room at the same time. Of course, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. Please note the screen for instructions. As always, we commence our meeting with a moment of silence for those persons who have passed on since our last meeting in December of 2020. Within our Commission family, we want to remember Jonathan Jones, who was the former Department of Parks and Recreation Facility Director in the Southern Area, who launched the extremely popular Beltway BBQ. And his wife, Rhea, is the Facility Director now with the Department of Parks and Recreation. We want to remember the Jones family in our thoughts and prayers. We also want to remember Chip Ryan in Prince George's County. He was a respected attorney, a real estate broker, a very fine gentleman who was always smiling. Coincidentally, he and I overlapped in college. He was a little younger, and it's just very sad that he passed away, so we want to remember him as well. Within the state of Maryland, we want to remember Tommy Raskin, who was the son of U.S. Congressman Jamie Raskin. Congressman Raskin posted a magnificent tribute to his multi-talented, kind-hearted, altruistic son, who succumbed to the pressures of significant depression. So we want to remember him as well. We have more than 21 million cases of coronavirus and over 357,000 deaths in the United States alone as well. Dawn Wells, age 82, the actress known as Mary Anna in Gilligan's Island, and Luke Letlow, age 41, the congressman-elect from Louisiana. Throughout the nation and the world, so many people have passed on, we're just going to highlight some. K.C. Jones, the National Basketball Association legendary coach and player who helped the Boston Celtics win eight championships as a player and two additional championships as a coach. Tanya Roberts, an actress known for her roles in the James Bond film A View to Kill. Roger Berland, age 90, New York City theatrical producer who produced or co-produced more than 40 Broadway plays and musicals, including Tony Award-winning productions of Amadeus, Eight Misbehavin', and Guys and Dolls. Joe Clark, who is the New Jersey high school principal who inspired the 1989 film Lean on Me. Paul Westphal, five-time NBA All-Star basketball coach and Hall of Fame guard who won the championship with the Boston Celtics, who ultimately succumbed to brain cancer. Eric Jerome Dickie, the New York Times bestselling author. John Ecstasy Fletcher, a rapper and member of the '80s hip-hop group Houdini. Pierre Cardin, age 98, the French designer who transformed men's and women's fashions in the '60s. Alto Reed, saxophonist of Bob Seger's Silver Bullet Band. Phil Nuxey-Negro, the Major League Baseball Hall of Fame player known as one of baseball's greatest knuckleball pitchers. Richard Thornburg, former U.S. Attorney General under Presidents Reagan and George H.W. Bush. Floyd, the franchise Little, the National Football League Hall of Fame running back. Phyllis McGuire, some of us will remember, the last remaining member of the 1950s McGuire Sisters Trio. Actress Rebecca Lueker, who was a Broadway actress. Actress Rosalynn Knight, actress known for Carry On films. George Carruthers, one of the country's first leading African-American astrophysicists and principal designer for the telescope which was a part of NASA's Apollo 16 mission to the moon in 1972. Darryl Trefford, age 87, who was a psychiatrist and autism research director, who was the consultant on the film Rain Man, which featured Dustin Hoffman. K.T. Oslyn, Grammy Award-winning country singer and songwriter. Kevin Green, former NFL Hall of Fame linebacker. Kerry Vincent, judge on the Food Network Challenge. And of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered the loss of a loved one, too. I'm sure this list is not all-inclusive, it cannot be, but I just wanted to highlight a few, but acknowledge the people who have, the ever-growing number of people who have passed on from coronavirus, these are human beings, they are someone's loved ones, and they are not just statistics, and we want to remember each and every one of them. And for any of you who suffered losses in your family, we extend our hearts to you, and we lift you up in our thoughts and prayers, if we may have that moment of silence now, Thank you. It is the month of January, it is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Human trafficking is very real, alive, and thriving, and it is totally unacceptable. And if we see someone who's manifesting peculiar traits or characteristics, we should offer help, or see if we can direct them somewhere, or report it somewhere. We cannot tolerate human trafficking. It is also Financial Wellness Month, it is Get a Balanced Life Month, okay, good luck with that, and it is National Be On Purpose Month. And I would submit that this January of 2021, Be On Purpose is more critical than ever, because there's a lot going on in our country, and we need to be intentional about how we respond to it, about how we step up, about how we look out for this country and all of her citizens. And we have to take responsibility, and there is no such thing as sitting on the sidelines. In the Food Department, it is National Oatmeal Month, Soup Month, and Hot Tea Month. January 7, January 7 is Harlem Globetrotters Day, celebrating the world-renowned exhibition basketball team founded 95 years ago. I'm just going to tell you, my all-time fave Harlem Globetrotters were curly kneel and meadow-lark lemon. January 7, 1830, the first United States railroad station opened, and guess what? It was in Maryland, right here in neighboring Baltimore. 1934 was the debut of Flash Gordon Comic Strip. 1955, very good year. Famed contralto Marion Anderson became the first African-American to perform with the New York Metropolitan Opera. An activist and a key figure in the civil rights movement, you will likely recall that in 1939, the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, refused to allow her to perform at Constitution Hall. Later that same, later that same year, with the help of then First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt, she performed a critically acclaimed Easter Sunday concert on the steps of the Lincoln Memorial to an integrated audience of over 75,000 people and a radio audience numbering in the millions. And First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt relinquished her membership in the DAR. 1959, January 7, American gangster Meyer Lansky fled Cuba due to the Cuban Revolution ousting Batista and bringing in Fidel Castro to power. If this story sounds familiar, think Hyman Roth in The Godfather. 1966 was the debut of the Dance Theater of Harlem. In 1972, Louis Powell and William Rehnquist were sworn in as Associate Justices of the United States Supreme Court. We have a few announcements. As you can see on this first slide, the Community Planning Division of the Planning Department seeks your input for the Adelphi Road, University of Maryland Global Campus, and University of Maryland Purple Line Station Area Sector Plan. Please take 10 minutes to complete an online survey to help guide planning and development for the surrounding area over the next 25 years. The survey ends tomorrow, January 8, 2021, and you can see the website on the screen. Next, Largo Wayfinding, Branding, and Placemaking Strategy Community Meeting will take place on Tuesday, January 12, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. You can learn about the project, strategy elements, and recommendations to help the residents and visitors navigate and experience downtown Largo. Again, note the screen. The West Hyattsville-Queens Chapel Sector Plan Team will host a virtual community open house on Wednesday, January 13, at 7:00 p.m. Attendees will learn preliminary findings from the existing conditions report and be able to participate in a Q&amp;A session with community planners. Register by January 12. The Department of Parks and Recreation Grab and Go Meals continues. We started this during the pandemic in March of 2020, but it continues for seniors ages 60 and better, and for individuals with disabilities ages 18 and up. They will take place on Wednesday, January 13 and January 27, from noon to 2:00 p.m. at six distribution sites across Prince George's County, and the sites are depicted on the screen, and you can register at mealtogogo eventbrite.com. We want to take a moment to say a very special happy birthday to our senior technical hearing writer and editor, Marie Proctor, who's been with us for a very, very long time, and we wanted to wish her a very, very happy birthday. And then finally, I want to take a moment to thank everyone and acknowledge that we truly appreciate everyone's flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our no-longer-new-normal. I have to close with, yesterday was incredulous, nauseating, shameful, infuriating, and a terrible, dark day for our nation, and the world was watching. I have, I could talk about this for a long time, but I am one who has always espoused hope. You hear me mention hope week in and week out, and I've done this my entire life, and I have to share for a moment, for a moment, I almost lost hope yesterday, almost, because I will never empower anyone to take away my hope, and I would submit that, and ask that either, that none of you allow anyone to take away your hope. The sun rose this morning, we all woke up this morning, good and decent people are standing up and speaking up, some belatedly, and I believe that good and decent people will always prevail. It is a process, we must fasten our seatbelts, but good and decent people will prevail. So stay vigilant, stay diligent, stay woke, do your part, speak up, do not stand on the sidelines, and embrace this country, and lift her up, and lift up her people, all of us, lift up her people, and never allow anyone to bring us down. Keep hope alive. We remain thankful for our blessings and ask that you make every effort to be kind, to stay safe, to look out for one another, to stay strong, resilient, and remain ever-hopeful as we strive to get through all of these challenging times together. Thank you. I will first do a roll call for our Planning Board. I see we have Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, President.
Commissioner Washington.
President.
Commissioner Dooner.
Here.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Aye.
Okay, he's here, okay.
I'm here.
Okay, we have our Chief of Development and Review, James Hunt, joining us here today. We have our Planning Board Administrator, Jessica Jones. We have our Technical Hearing Writer, Lee Kratka. We have Kenny Flanagan, who is over here, a senior planner, working these PowerPoints and doing everything that he can to help this process move forward. And we also have, not always visible, but we have Ryan Cron here, our visual media specialist, who helps with all these IT issues, and he's the guy, you know, like Ghostbusters, who you're going to call, he's the guy we're going to call when everything goes wrong, and he's the guy we do call. So thank you, everyone. We have our legal counsel, our principal legal counsel, David Warner, on with us as well, and I think we are good to go. So I'm going to start with Item 3A. We have legislation, Mr. Gardner. We have a detailed memo in front of us. Mr. Gardner, do you have anything to add to our detailed memo, or anything that you need to succinctly report on?
Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Board. For the record, it is Adrian Gardner, General Counsel. We did prepare a detailed memo for you. The only thing I would add is that we do plan to, we have already begun engaging with our partners in county government, the District Council, County Executive's Office, our folks in Montgomery County, but we do think that we have an issue about the recent Attorney General's opinion that needs to be addressed, and we plan to get our partners together and work on it, and with your approval, we'll start getting that work done immediately.
I move approval, Madam Chair. Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey.
But aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner.
But aye.
The ayes have it, 5-0, thank you so much.
Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, you, too. We have Items 4A and 4B, which are draft resolutions, that is the consent agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose the consent agenda? I would note that we have Norman Rivera, are you on, signed up for 4B? But I think that's just in case there are any questions. Mr. Rivera, are you on?
Yes, I was just here for questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion with regard to the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda items 4A and 4B in cooperation with the consent agenda, in accordance with the consent agenda, sorry. And I second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Washington. Vice Chair Bailey.
But aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
But aye.
Commissioner Dooner.
But aye.
Okay, and next we have Item 9, which is a mandatory referral, 1830F, Canter Creek Park. I just want to make sure we have, Mr. Kowalik, are you on?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I don't know if we had anyone from Parks and Recreation staff on. I have a number of people signed up, we only need, I see Alva McNeil is on, okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I believe Don Herring is here as well.
Okay, it's hard for me to see the list here. Okay, Mr. Herring, okay, so Mr. Kowalik, you can get started, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ted Kowalik, with the Special Projects Section in Countywide Planning, seeking your approval to transmit staff's recommendation regarding mandatory referral 1830F, Canter Creek Community Park. Next slide, please. The location of the park is kind of central in Council District 9, and it is in Planning Area 82A. Next slide. Here's an aerial view of the park, which is off of Dressage Drive in Upper Marlboro. Next slide, please. Project site vicinity map before you, is the Dressage Drive, and the next major road that intersects with is Frank Tippett Road. Next slide, please. This is a natural features map of the site, and you'll note in the northern end of the site, in green, is a primary management area. That'll come up in staff's recommendations. Next slide, please. The existing zone on the site is RS, and is approximately 25 acres in size. Next slide. Master plan right away, there aren't any adjacent to the site, Frank Tippett Road is a collector. Next slide, please. Here's a conceptual site plan for Canter Creek Park. It'll include unstructured play area, 5,000 square foot roughly playground, pedestrian seating area, and two back-to-back half-basketball courts for youth, and 26 parking spaces. Next slide, please. Once again, the playground, the park will include unstructured play area, the basketball courts, about 5,000 square foot playground, multiple mixed-use trails that'll connect to the existing trail system. It'll operate during normal park hours and not at night, there is no exterior lighting, and the Parks and Rec Department hopes to be in construction in early 2021, with completion by the end of 2021. Next slide, please. Staff recommendations. We recommend that they submit a revised natural resource inventory, as well as a revised tree, type 2 tree conservation plan, and that'll be a separate PCP2 for just the park site. And the final slide. Environmental planning section also recommends that park take care to avoid any negative impacts on the primary management area north on the park site. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kowalik. Let's see if anyone has any questions for you at this time, or let me see, Mr. Herring, first of all, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Prince George's County Planning Board. For the record, my name is Don Herring, I'm the park planner for the Southern Area of Prince George's County. Yes, Madam Chair, just had one slight correction. We anticipate the construction for the project to start in the summer of 2021 and be completed in the summer of 2022.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herring. And Ms. Ewing, was, did you need to supplement in any way? No, that was, no?
No. Good morning, no ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so does the board have any questions of Mr. Herring or Mr. Kowalik? Madam Vice Chair.
No questions, so thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
No questions.
Commissioner Dooner.
Yeah, so for potential for Mr. Herring, it looks like around there that it's fairly residential surrounding the park area. I live next to a park area that's surrounded by residential homes, and it has a playground, it's not nearly as big as this, or as nice as this will be. But one of the things that we have issues with, particularly on open space areas, are dogs. People don't respect the nearby residents, they bring their dogs out there, they don't pick up after them. We've installed trash cans for dog bags, so that way you could at least have plastic bags to pick up after your dogs, and that's helped some. And I know that that's a very minor detail to this kind of a plan, but it'd be great if you had, basically, the kind of the poop stations, for lack of a better term, with bags around there, and trash cans around the playground areas in case parents are eating or picnicking with their kids, because those are small details that aren't always in close proximity to areas that would best use them. And that's my only kind of comment, I don't know if you guys have thought about that in any detail.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioner Dooner, thank you for those comments, and yes, they're definitely well-received. We will have trash receptacles at the facility, and we will definitely make note of the stations for the dog owners to have access as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other questions, Commissioner Geraldo?
None.
Okay, so is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ryan McAllister. Ryan McAllister signed up to speak, there you are.
No, I did not sign up for this.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, we have you on this case. We'll have to find, what case did you sign up for?
I signed up for Cases 3 and 7, the Branch Avenue-Harmony Avenue one, and the Canter Creek Park mandatory referral.
This is the Canter Creek mandatory referral?
I'm sorry about that, Madam Commissioner, I just joined, so I was having problems technologically there.
Okay, so we just finished the presentation on the Canter Creek referral, so was there something you wanted to say on that one?
No, ma'am, I was here on behalf of the Maryland National Park and Planning for any technical questions, as the engineer bracket for the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, so we're good. So now, is there a motion to approve, or a motion at all?
Madam, Madam Chair, I move that we accept and adopt staff's recommendation and approve transmittal of MR-1830F to Bill Tyler, Director of Prince George's Department of Parks and Recreation. Second.
We have, we have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey.
But aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner.
But aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
But aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 5-0. The next item is Item 5, which is detailed site plan 20018, is the Dunkin' Donuts Clinton. I'm going to check to make sure we have everyone's signed up. It's Mr. Bishop, are you on?
Present.
Okay, and Mr. Lynch.
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, those are, oh, and Tamatha Pantano? Or Tamatha?
I'm present.
You can, how do I pronounce it? You know what I?
Tamatha.
Tamatha, okay, Tamatha, thank you. All right, Mr. Bishop, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. For the record, Andrew Bishop with the Urban Science Section. Item 5 is a DSP for construction of a 1,802 square foot eating and drinking establishment with drive-through service on Parcel B within the existing Clinton Gardens Shopping Center. Slide 2, please. The site is in Area 81A, Council District 9. Slide 3, please. The site is on the south side of Woodyard Road and east of its intersection with High View Lane. Slide 4, please. The DSP is in the CFC and CO zones on Parcel B in the northwest portion of the Clinton Gardens Shopping Center, and outlined on this slide in green. Slide 5, please. The site is within the military installation overlay zone in Area E, which limits the allowed building height. The proposed building height of the eating and drinking establishment is 12.5 feet and meets the requirements of this zone. Slide 6, please. This area shows the boundary of the DSP and outlines this vacant site in red. Slide 7, please. The site has been mass graded and is generally flat. No new environmental impacts are proposed with this application. Slide 8, please. This slide shows the master plan rights of way in the vicinity of the property. These include the arterial MD 223 north of the site in red, and a freeway of Branch Avenue to the east of the site in orange. Slide 9, please. This slide is bird's eye view of the property. This slide is bird's eye view of the property and shows the location of the existing improvements and vacant property on the site, which will be the location of the eating and drinking establishment, and is outlined in blue. Slide 10, please. This slide shows the site plan for the property, which is accessed from the shared access roadway on the south and the drive aisle on the northeastern portion of the site, which connects to the adjacent commercial site. A one-way drive aisle circles the building, and the main entrance is located on the east side of the structure facing the existing bank. Parking for the property is provided by previous parking spaces on the east side of the building and by shared access spaces across the access drive. Technical revisions are related to the dimensions and general notes have been recommended. Slide 11, please. This slide shows the landscaped rendering of the site plan for the property and been found in conformance with the landscape manual, with the exception of section 4.4, which is conditioned to be corrected. Slide 12, please. The architectural design of the building proposes a contemporary franchise look and features a modern gray scheme with accents of brown, orange, and pink. The building elevations are faced with hardy quink siding, wood slats, and concrete panels on each side of the building. The materials in combination will provide dimension and visual interest. Slide 13, please. This slide shows the proposed building on the signage and include a total of four building mounted channel letter-style signs. These signs include the Dunkin' name over the entrance and the corporate DD logo and have been found acceptable. However, due to the number and variety of signs proposed, a sign title is recommended to show conformance to the Prince George's County zoning ordinance and is conditioned. Slide 14, please. One proposed freestanding sign is located along Maryland 223 and includes the Dunkin' name that advertises the Dunkin' the drive-through. The internally illuminated double-spaced sign is 25 feet in height and meets the requirements for freestanding signage. Slide 15, please. The site includes a number of directional signs to assist with the drive-through traffic on the site and are shown here. Slide 16, please. The last slide shown here includes an exhibit submitted by the applicant demonstrating that the proposed layout is sufficient and meets the charging radius for a delivery truck on the property. In conclusion, the Urban Design Section recommends the planning board adopt findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP 20018 for Dunkin' Donuts, subject to the conditions found in the staff report. The applicant has reviewed the staff report and is in agreement with the proposed conditions. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
Not a question, but Mr. Bishop, would you go back to either slide nine or 10 and point out the sidewalk, proposed sidewalk location? I could not figure out here the sidewalks off.
Proposed, can it go down to?
Well, Mr. Bishop, what's, what slide is, is this the best slide for you? Slide nine?
Ten.
Ten?
Slide nine is the existing. Slide 10 or 11 would be better.
Okay.
Okay, 11, and then, and then if you can guide Mr. Flanagan, so of where the proposed, he's got the cursor, so if you can guide him.
So Kenny, where the cursor is, can you go to the right, right here, there's an entrance onto the property, north, going north, right through the landscaping.
Oh, it's still, okay.
Between the two trees, adjacent to the dumpster. And then there's a connection to Woodyard Road proposed on the north in portion of the property crossing the, the drive-through.
Or doesn't connect to any, anything else?
It does not connect to the existing shopping center to the, the east, no. There's an, and then there's an existing sidewalk that's located along the shared access drive that is, that will remain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Commissioner Washington, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Duonner?
No, no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we, Mr. Lynch?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
I'm here today on behalf of MPP Realty LLC, the applicant for this Dunkin' site to be located along Woodyard Road in Clinton. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Bishop. It's always a pleasure working with him on these applications, and as a result, we did reach consensus with regards to the conditions and do not propose any changes to the proposed conditions of staff. That being said, the applicant is agreeing with the staff's recommendation, and again, we agreed to staff's conditions of approval. If you have any questions with the department's detailed site plan, I'd be happy to address those or address any concerns that this board may have. But other than that, we expect the request, this board's approval of this detailed site plan. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I think if you didn't really have anything to add, there may or may not be any questions. So I think what we'll do is go to Ms. Pantano and then see if the board has any questions of either of you. Ms. Pantano?
Yes, hi. I just wanted to speak in favor of this proposal. I think that printing Dunkin' Donuts to Clinton is going to be very good for the small business community and good for Clinton in general.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to see if the board has any questions of any, well, by a show of hands, let me see if any of you have any questions, because I don't think Mr. Lynch or Ms. Pantano added anything of substance except for support. And since I don't see a show of hands, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-20018 along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duonner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five-zero. Okay, a couple more things. I'm going to take a timeout for a second, because as I said yesterday, was a very emotional day, and it was such a roller coaster of emotions, and so it was imperative for me to talk about hope. But in the midst of talking about hope emanating from yesterday, I was remiss in not talking about additional hope, because the National Football League playoffs begin Saturday and Sunday, and the Washington team plays Tampa Bay on Saturday night. So we're going to root for our home team, our home Washington team, and at least most of us. And also, the NCAA football championship game is Monday night with Ohio State playing against the University of Alabama. So I know some big Buckeye fans, but we know some Crimson Tide fans too, many of whom appear regularly, so you just had to throw that out there. And the 2020 Heisman Trophy was awarded Tuesday night to Devonta Smith, a wide receiver also from the University of Alabama. So I had to get that in. And then I'm going to tell you, with our next cases are item seven, which is a detailed site plan for Harmony at Brandywine, followed by item six. And then I think by that time, we'll need maybe a 10-minute health break, and then we'll come back for item eight. So with that, we're going to go to item seven. And I will make sure we have everyone, and look at Mr. Hurlbut, he's there, present, Where's Mr. Howler?
Good morning, Madam Chair, I am present, and I do want to thank you for calling out our local Washington football.
There we go.
We are all rooting for them.
Yes, indeed, okay. And then we have a number of people signed up. George Warhollick? No, we don't see him. Was it caller three, maybe? While you're looking for him, Mr. Lenhart, I know you're on, right? I thought I saw your name.
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you, good morning.
And then Ryan Day, good morning. Yeah, there's Ryan Day, okay.
Good morning, present, thank you.
Good morning. And then again, we have Ryan McAllister. Are you on this one too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
Good morning, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I can speak on behalf of George Warhollick with Ubar as well.
Okay, all right. Wonderful, okay, so there we're straight. Mr. Hurlbut, you're, oh, and we also have applicant's exhibit number one, which are the applicant's proposed revisions to the staff's proposed detailed site plan conditions. Okay?
Correct.
Mr. Hurlbut, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Warhollick, that was you signing up? Mr. Warhollick, that was you signing in?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Got it, thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Hurlbut, you're on.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of planning board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Hurlbut with Urban Design Section. Project before you is detailed site plan DSP 20014, Harmony at Brandywine. As stated before, there are revised conditions that have been submitted by the applicant before the deadline. The applicant is requesting, requests is for a DSP for an elderly care facility with 93 independent living apartments, 62 assisted living units, and 40 care units. Next slide. The site is located in southern portion of Prince George's County in planning area 85A, Council District Nine. Next slide. More specifically, the subject site is on the west side of Maryland Route Five, also known as Branch Avenue, approximately 1,600 feet north of Moore's Road. Next slide. The zoning map shows that this property is in the MXT zone and surrounded by residentially zone properties. Next slide. The subject property, I mean, excuse me, the aerial photo illustrates the existing conditions of, conditions of the property, which is 8.24 acres in size, in fronts on Branch Avenue, also known as Maryland Route Five. And to the south is the OUSSC Water Tower, and one family detached housing are further away to the east and west of the subject site. Next slide. The site has steep slopes that fall from Branch Avenue to the, on the east to a stream valley on the west side of the property. Next slide. The master plan right-of-way shows that the project is adjacent to the master planned freeway, Maryland Route Five, shown in orange, and a plan in south of a planned arterial A65, shown in red. Next slide. The site plan shows the proposed building and a single access point from Route Five. The proposed elderly care facility, which is consists of assisted living facility, home care, and apartment housing for the elderly and handicapped uses, are all permitted in the MXT zone. The plan also showed the site will be graded with a vehicle access loop at street grade and a building that rises three stories above grade. As the site drops to the north in the rear of the building, as the parking lot moves around the building, the building will present as four stories. Next slide. The rendered site plan shows the 8.24 acre property will be developed with elderly care facility, which is made up of the individual uses. The facility will be accessed from Maryland Route Five via a service road that will be built within the right-of-way to serve this development and a future commercial development to the north. The four-story building will be surrounded by a parking lot. The main entrance will face Maryland Route Five, service road, with a covered drop-off area that, this is the second level of the building. The building will have an enclosed courtyard and two amenity areas and a loading area at the rear of the building, which is shown at the bottom of this slide. Next slide. The four-story building will rise to be 54 feet tall, as shown in these renderings. The main entrance will be highlighted by a pattern gable group and a turret just to the left of the main entrance. Next slide. Covered porches and a drop, covered drop-off area further highlight the main entrance, which is shown in the east elevation or the middle image in this slide. The rest of the front facade will be primarily of two-tone brick and open balconies with Victorian details topped with gable roofs, which will provide vertical breaks in the building mass. The north end of the front facade, shown in the upper-left corner of this slide, will introduce blue and yellow fiber cement siding to, on the upper stores. The rear and side of the building are composed mostly of fiber cement siding with white vertical bays of windows, also topped with gable roofs, as shown in the bottom image of this slide. Next slide. A freestanding sign will be located near the single access point from Maryland Route Five, as shown here. Next slide. The applicant has provided a turning template that demonstrates that fire trucks may turn around at the rear of the building where the parking lot that ends at the loading area. Next slide. These details show the retaining wall details as well as the trash enclosure details. Staff has also conditioned that a similar enclosure be provided to screen the generator at the rear of the building. Next slide. The property is subject to the provisions of the Woodland Conservation Ordinance because of a previously approved conservation plan. The type-two tree conservation plan, TCP2-036-2020, was submitted with this DSP. This DSP is for the first phase of the overall development and for off-site improvements for this phase. The Woodland Conservation Worksheet shows the clearing of 7.39 acres of net track area with .49 acres of off-site, resulting in woodland conservation requirement of 13.13 acres for this phase. TCP2 indicates the requirements for this phase is proposed to be met with 1.16 acres of onsite woodland preservation and 11.52 acres of off-site woodland conservation credit. No specimen trees will be removed in Phase One of this subdivision, and minor technical changes are required for the TCP2, which are conditioned herein. There are four separate PMA impacts totaling 5,879 square feet of this stream valley buffer and steep slopes. The proposed impacts for the PMA are proposed for emergency access grading during access construction and one stormwater at fall for a road crossing. Next slide. This slide simply details the impacts of the sewer pipe that connects under Maryland Route Five. The Urban Design Staff recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve DSP 20014 and the associated TCP for Harmony at Brandywine. The applicant has proposed revised revisions to staff report, which staff is supportive, which includes the deletion of condition B, further revision to the right-of-way dedication with a modified, which we are in agreement with, because we plan to modify the finding or... or to modi, because the modified access point reflected in this pending application would result in less right-of-way being dedicated than was proposed in the approved preliminary plan of subdivision. This modified additional dedication and access are still in conformance with the master plan of transportation and the preliminary plan of subdivision. At the time of certification of the final plan, the applicant will be required to modify its dedication along Maryland Route 5 based on the final design by SHA of the modified access along Maryland Route 5. This additional finding will be added to the final resolution. In addition, the applicant has proposed additional changes to the language in Condition F, which staff supports. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlbut. Um, let's see if there are any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Geraldo?
No. No questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Haller.
Again, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board, Thomas Haller on behalf of the applicant in this case. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Hurlbut for his assistance in processing the application and, uh, and we are in agreement with the staff recommendation and the, and the conditions as revised. Um, this, this, uh, project may look somewhat familiar to the planning board as this is the second project of this type which has come before you. The first one, uh, if you may recall, was for a project called Tradition to Peachfield on Enterprise Road. If you've driven down Enterprise Road lately, you've seen that that project is now finally under construction. Uh, and this will be the second elderly care facility built in the, uh, in the county uh, by Smith Packet, who is the, uh, uh, the primary developer of this project. Uh, their projects are operated through an entity called Harmony Senior Services, and there are 36 of those facilities located around the southeastern United States, mostly in Virginia, Pennsylvania, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. Um, and they are very excited to have an opportunity to build a, an elderly care facility here in, uh, in the Brandywine area. Um, you may recall from our presentation on the Enterprise Road project that there are three, um, if you will, levels of care in this building. There is an independent living component, um, and in their experience, the average age of those residents is approximately 86 years of age. There's a, an assisted living component to this project, and the average age of the residents in that part of the project is typically 87 years of age. And then there's a memory care unit as well, and the average age of the residents in that component is 84 years of age. So, uh, this is a project that is planned and targeted for seniors in Prince George's County, and we think it will be a welcome addition to southern Prince George's County. Um, this is part of a larger project, as you note in the staff report. There's previously been a conceptual site plan and a preliminary plan of subdivision approved. This is the first detailed site plan, uh, for any of the components of the project. A second one should be before you next month. Uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. As you know, we have Ryan McAllister and George Warholick on the phone as well, if you have any questions. Um, I'm happy to go through the conditions in more detail, but I think that Mr. Hurlbut has covered them. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the modifications to the conditions. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, Mr. Haller, and it's good to see that we, we statistics show that people are living longer, um, hopefully, or in many cases. In many cases, yeah. And so it's important to have, um, the appropriate housing and particularly some gradations, uh, because things change. So, um, that's really good, um, just, I'm glad you have them, and, and actually, the memory care. Um, is there anything that you wish, is there anything you can describe about the memory care, anything else?
Well, I mean, the, the, what I find interesting about the facility is that the average age of the residents in the memory care facility is actually lower than the other one. Because there is early onset Alzheimer's that hits when you're, in your 60s, for example, so. Um, but ea, each of the, um, different components of the building will have a dedicated dining room. So the elderly, um, residents who are independent living will have, uh, eat together, uh, those that are in the memory care unit will eat together, and those that are in the, um, um, the assisted living will eat together. Um, and, um, obviously, that there will be, um, medical, on-site, in the form of, of registered nurses to assist with those needing additional care in the memory unit. Uh, the memory unit is designed so that there's limited access and controls. And then the interior courtyard that you saw on the site plan, that has a memory garden in it. Uh, and that's designed in order to provide security so that people aren't outside the building and then they, they walk, um, away from the property. So, I mean, sometimes, uh, people with memory issues wander, and so the building is designed with, uh, complete security both entering and exiting the facility, but also with facilities that are segregated to ensure that those with memory issues don't leave the building, uh, and are unaccounted for. So it's a, it's a great addition, I think, um, to have that. It allows people to age in place for a longer period of time and provides a much more, um, comfortable environment for them to be in because they don't have to be moved from one facility to another facility depending upon their medical or, um, or memory needs.
Thank you. Um, okay, so let's see if the board has any questions of you at this time, Ms. Bailey?
No questions, but I do like the age-in-place concept.
Yes, thank you. Um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Donner?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Geraldo?
Hi, good morning. No questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so with that, and so, um, everyone else signed up with you. Um, Mr. Haller is just here for questioning, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hurlbut, do you have anything else to add? Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve DSP-20014 and TCP2-036-2020, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further revised and amended by applicant exhibit number one. Second?
Um, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey, Vice Chair Bailey?
But I.
That was pretty enthusiastic, okay. Uh, Commissioner Washington? Commissioner Washington?
I.
Okay, alright, there we go. Um, let's see about how the I's are doing. Um, Commissioner Donner?
I'm paying attention and I'm voting I.
Okay, there we go. Okay, here, bring it up the rear, Commissioner Geraldo?
I gotta think about it. I'll vote I.
Okay.
True side.
Okay, the I's have it unanimously, thank you, 5-0, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is item six. It is the preliminary, uh, the preliminary plan of subdivision 4-20017 Aspen, Aspen, Maryland. Let's check, make sure we have everyone, we have a number of people signed up. Mr. Diaz Campbell?
Present.
Um, Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Mr. McGinnis?
Mr. McGinnis is present and has been woken up by the I's.
Okay, there we go. I knew you were gonna come up with something, Mr. McGinnis, okay. Mr. Lenhart, you're still here with us, right?
Yes, present.
Okay, Mr. Speech?
Good morning.
Okay, Terry Shum?
Sorry, I'm gonna be talking here for Terry Shum, this is Miriam Bader, City of College Park, she had another meeting.
Okay, so, alright, so, um, Miriam Bader is present.
I did find out.
I, I see you, I have you here, I was, you were next. Um, Stefan Gasner? Stefan Gasner, you're unmuted here. And, and we see you. Can you just say, "Present?", acknowledge that you can hear us. Okay. You may have to unmute yourself, we'll come back to you. Tom Burr?
Present.
Um, Matt Shaver?
Present.
Jeremy White?
Present.
Okay, and then, um, Daniel Cobell?
Present.
Okay, and you're a proponent, right? We have you, we have you signed up as other, but I'm, I'm looking, you know, we, I figured you're a proponent, okay. Um, okay, so now we're going to try Stefan Gasner again. Okay, we see that you're logged on, you are unmuted from our end. Um, you either have to unmute from your end, or if you wish to speak, you can call in. We can get you a call-in number. Excuse me? It's in the same, the call-in number is in the same email that you, uh, received. Um, so we just wanted to let you know that, okay. Um, alright, Mr. Diaz Campbell, you're on.
Alright. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
For the record, I am Mr. Diaz Campbell, senior planner with the subdivision zoning section. Item number six on the agenda is the preliminary plan of subdivision for Aston, Maryland, 4-20017. Subject project proposes two parcels for a total of 129 multifamily dwelling units and 2,098 square feet of commercial development. As American Housekeeping staff has received two items of additional backup, which were received before the noon deadline on Tuesday. These include a presentation from the applicant and the applicant's requested modifications to conditions approved.
Um, let me stop you, Mr. Diaz Campbell, I meant, I failed to mention that, but yes, we do have the two exhibits, and the, um, the introduction from the applicant, um, will be, um, uh, is labeled applicant's exhibit number one, and the revised, the proposed revised conditions will be applicant's exhibit number two. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, let's go onto the next slide, please. Site is located in the northwestern part of Prince George's County, in Planning Area 66, in Council District 3. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located on the north and south sides of Knox Road as intersection with Gilford Drive. Next slide, please. The subject site currently consists of one parcel and one lot, both of which are in the mixed-use infill or MUI zone. Land to the east of the subject property is also in the MUI zone, while land to the south and west is an one-family detached residential, or R55. University of Maryland campus to the north is an rural residential, or RR. Next slide, please. The overlay map shows that the property is within the Development District Overlay Zone, or DDO, associated with the 2010 Central US1 corridor approved sector plan. The property is also just outside of an aviation policy area. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently occupied by three existing multifamily buildings holding 32 dwelling units. The existing development is to be razed to make way for new development. Photo also shows the surrounding properties. To the north of property is Lehigh Road, with the main campus of the University of Maryland beyond. To the east of the property are mixed-use building on the south side of Knox Road and several multifamily buildings on the north side of Knox Road. To the south is Gilford Drive, with a church beyond. To the southwest are unbuilt right-of-way for Gilford Drive and a private student center. To the west are a dormitory building and a parking garage owned by the University of Maryland. Next slide, please. This photo shows another view of the site, taken from an aerial perspective from the north. Next slide, please. The site map shows that the topography on the site is mostly flat, with the exception of a steep slope on the north parcel between the existing buildings and Lehigh Road. Next slide, please. Master plan right-of-way map shows Gilford Drive, master plan collector roadway. No additional right-of-way dedication is required with this project. Next slide, please. The 10 critical intersections impacted by the development are shown by the yellow squares on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. The sector plan gives specific requirements for determining which intersections to analyze, and in this case, all the signalized intersections between Campus Drive and Gilford Drive were analyzed. It has found that all the critical intersections would continue to function adequately given the proposed development. Next slide, please. The site is in the Central US1 corridor and is therefore subject to off-site bicycle and pedestrian adequacy. The applicant has proposed the off-site improvements shown on this slide, which include seven perpendicular ramps, a raised mid-block crosshawk across Knox Road, continental crosshawk striping, charity's lane markings, pedestrian lane warning signs, and bicycles may use full lane regulatory signs. Next slide, please. The existing conditions plan shows the existing buildings in yellow, the property boundary in red, and the right-of-way in blue. Also shown here are the existing parking areas and the steep slope on the north side of the northern parcel. Next slide, please. The preliminary plan shows that there is no proposed change to the property boundaries. However, the existing lot and parcel be, will be redesignated as two parcels. Productive facilities including water, sewer, police, and fire rescue facilities exist to serve the site. The applicant has requested a variation from Section 24-122A of the subdivision regulations to allow elimination of the public utility easements required along the public rights. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth in 2011, the technical staff report. Site is not subject to woodland conservation ordinance, as it has less than 10,000 square feet of existing woodland and no previously approved tree conservation plans. Therefore, there is no TCP1 associated with this project. Next slide, please. This slide shows the conceptual footprints of the new, of the two new buildings on site in yellow. Existing and proposed pedestrian routes are shown in magenta. The new building in the northern parcel will cut into the steep slope, while stairs and an upper-level exit will ensure pedestrian access to Lehigh Road. In conclusion, the subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan submission 4-20017, Aston, Maryland, and variation from Section 24-122A, subject to the conditions contained in the technical staff report. The applicant has provided exhibit with proposed revisions to conditions of approval, which staff confirms. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Um, let's see if there's any questions of you at this time, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No question.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No, no questions.
Um, thank you. Um, so, um, Mr. Tedesco, I went through the list of folks that you have on your team, and of course, one, for wha, for whatever reason, we were not able to, to hear Stefan Gasner, who we see has signed up. That he's here? I know that he's here, we know, we see that he's here, but, um, but we couldn't hear him when we called. So, um, I guess what I'm saying is either, do you, is he here for ju, just if we have questions? Mr. Tedesco?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, but if we can't hear him, he can call in, I, he can call in on the number provided in the email, uh, which is another option, or the rest of your team can handle it, that's okay too. So I just wanted to alert you to that, okay?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, for that consideration. Uh, Mr. Gasner is here, uh, with Aspen Heights Partners, uh, along with Dan Cobell and Tom Burr, so.
Okay.
Uh, I know Mr. Cobell, Mr. Burr, um, their, their mics seem to be working, so i, if there are any questions, I'm quite confident that Mr. Cobell, Mr. Burr can address them and, and Mr. Gasner's technical issues, but, um, we appreciate the courtesy for him to, um, call in if that works, but, um.
You think you got it?
We can communicate also, so I thi, I think we're good.
Okay, so then, Mr. Tedesco, you're on.
Thank you so much, and, and happy new year, Madam Chair.
Happy new year.
Members of the planning board, it's a pleasure to be with you, uh, in the new year, and, um, I would echo the, the chair's comments, uh, earlier at the outset, and I think we all agree that we are looking for, hopefully, a much better year in 2021, uh, notwithstanding the instances of yesterday, but, um, and I can't help but, um, be remiss not to comment on Mr. Haller's case before this one, and now my case here with, with bookending, kinda two into the spectrum with a senior housing project, uh, the item you just heard, and now a student housing project, uh, adjacent to the University of Maryland. So, um, quite fitting, I would say.
Okay.
Uh, but it is my great pleasure to be with you this morning, uh, on behalf of York Acquisitions LLC, who is a, which is a subsidiary of Aspen Heights Partners. Uh, Madam Chair went through the role, but just, uh, to, so that everyone has a understanding of who all our attendee... understanding of who all our attendees are and where they're from, Stefan Gassner, Dan Cobell, and Tom Burr are with Aspen Heights Partners. Nick Beach, who you know is with Boulder Engineering, Mike Lenhart, who you know is with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. And Jeremy White and Matt Shaver are with DSP Design, who are the architects and who have joined us today, although the DSP is not before you today, just preliminary plan. We are in pre-acceptance with the DSP, so we expect to have that before you in the coming months. I also want to take an opportunity real quick to just thank the city, Ms. Bader, Ms. Schum, as well as the mayor and city council, who we work very closely with on this project. And of course, Mr. Ed McGinnis from the University of Maryland, who's with us this morning as an adjoining property owner. The university is, and we've worked in consultation with both those agencies to great success. And finally, just a thank you to Mr. Diaz Campbell and our planning staff for their review and processing of this application. It was a pretty smooth process, and for that, we thank Mr. Diaz Campbell and all of your staff, and thank Mr. Diaz Campbell for his presentation this morning, which was quite thorough and doesn't really leave me a lot more to say on the technical components of the staff report. But because Aspen Heights Partners is new to Prince George's County and the state, we did want to take an opportunity at this hearing to avoid having to do it at the subsequent detailed site plan hearing, just to introduce you to Aspen Heights as a new developer for student housing multifamily in the Prince George's County College Park, University of Maryland area. And so if Mr. Flanagan could go to applicant's exhibit one, or I could share my screen if it's easier with you.
Thank you, yeah, we got it, okay, perfect.
The additional material.
Yeah, that's okay.
So this, and again, we're just, if you could scroll down to maybe page three, Kenny? There you go, we can start there if everyone wants to do that. And just by way of background, Madam Chair, members of the board, this presentation was shared with not only the city of College Park, the mayor and council, but also with the University of Park Development Committee that they have, and so we presented before them as well. And so we just thought it was appropriate to provide you all with the same presentation. We don't need to spend a lot of time, but I do want to hit some high points with respect to the applicant, Aspen Heights Partners, as you can see on your screen. They are a national student housing multifamily developer and manager based out of Austin, Texas, although this group before you is based out of Charlotte, North Carolina. They've got 1.6 billion development since their founding in 2006, and they have over 375 employees. Just trying to get the next slide, please. Aspen Heights Platform includes development, construction, property management, and marketing and leasing. Next slide. You can see their footprint throughout the United States is quite impressive throughout coast to coast, east to west, north to south. They've got, excuse me, projects and/or development acquisitions throughout the country. Next slide. This slide, we wanted to share as a, to reinforce them as a leader in student housing throughout the country. They rank in the top 10 for top developers through the fall of 2020. They're in the top 10 for top owners, and they're ranked currently 13 for top managers. Next slide. The remaining slides are really further reinforcing because we don't have the detailed presentation material when we go to some of these work sessions throughout the municipality, so we provided our own little slide sheet with respect to some of the project details for those entities we'll review in this case, all of which is included in your staff report, so we don't need to dwell on this slide. And Mr. Flanagan can scroll through the remaining slides. These are more or less a sneak peek to what you will see with the upcoming detailed site plan with respect to the building and the elevations, again, with respect to the development types. Again, not necessarily the remains of the preliminary plan, but certainly wanted to share it with you and give you a sneak peek of what you will be seeing in the coming month, month or two, with respect to the detailed site plan. It is a high-end student housing project on both the north and south side of Knox Road at the intersection of Guilford. And with that, Madam Chair, we don't really have anything further. We do have applicant's exhibit two, which is proposed revised findings and conditions. We have vetted those with your staff. I would just, just for the record, indicate that the revisions to Condition Six in applicant's exhibit two, although presented by the applicants, we had initially requested those conditions to be revised more or less identical to the, excuse me, the City of College Park's conditions that we agreed to. However, in consultation with your staff and staff's consultation with the University of Maryland, as well as with the City of College Park, the language you see before you in applicant's exhibit two for Condition Six is the agreed-upon language which the applicant is in agreement with. And I understand, and I won't speak for them, but I understand so is the university and so is the city. So with that, Madam Chair, we're happy to answer any questions. We appreciate your consideration and respectfully request the approval of this preliminary plan.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Tedesco, that's pretty succinct for you, number one. Number two, I look-
I think I'm saving my scheme for the next slide.
I think you are. But anyway, I look at this, your applicant's exhibit number one, which is the Aspen Heights Platform and Overview, and I'm just floored because we had, I at least was not aware of any such student housing when I was in college eons ago. So it's just really, really beautiful. But since you referenced the prior case, maybe Mr. Haller's client can get me on the back end. So anyway, it's just really, really beautiful. So let's see if there's any questions for you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions. Yeah, I take the chairwoman's comments that the applicant exhibit one looks really good.
Yes.
I think you guys did a great job at design, functionality, and just the compact space that's in there. It's just laid out really nicely, it was done well.
And beautiful amenities, very nice. Okay, and Commissioner Geraldo?
No comments, I just echo the comments of the previous commissioners.
Okay, thank you. So no questions, all right. So now, Mr. Tedesco, so your folks are here, just if there are any questions at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would just take a brief moment, I'm not sure if I'll be able to speak again, just to thank the commissioners for their comments, and we are excited to bring the DSP before you and look forward to that hearing. And we can get into more of the details, and we have better presentation material, hopefully, for that hearing, which will further reinforce the comments here today. So with that, thank you. And, yeah, everyone else on our side is here to answer any questions, so we will submit.
Wonderful, and you get to come back after everyone else. And yes, and so we look forward to those additional presentations, because now you got to live up to these comments. So, let's see who we got here. Let's start with Marion Bader.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, and chair and planning board members. I'm Marion Bader, Senior Planner for the City of College Park. The City of College Park, City Council met on December 8th and voted 6 to 2 to recommend approval of the Preliminary Plan of Subdivision for Aston, Maryland, with conditions, and recommended approval of the PUE variation. The city's conditions were incorporated into the staff recommendation. We support the staff's recommendation with the revised language.
Wow. Okay. It sort of begs the question, but I'm gonna leave it alone. Okay, let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, Mr. McGinnis?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. I actually feel like I've been a frequent visitor to these Thursday meetings, and I think that's a good thing.
You are.
There's actually a lot, there's actually a lot happening, exciting things happening in College Park, including, and I'll join the welcome to Aspen Heights, including attracting quality developers to invest in our community by what I think are significant upgrades. We've talked about this area of Knox Road, the old Knox Box area, really in a very short period of time being completely, not just reimagined, rebuilt and repurposed, and that is all a good thing. I've submitted a letter of support. I haven't changed my mind since I submitted that letter. The university strongly supports this project. And I do note there are some BPIS improvements that are beyond university property. Conceptually, they're fine, I expect them to move I expect them to move to approval expeditiously. It's a good, it's a good project, it's a good group, and I hope I was more succinct than Mr. Tedesco.
You did great, Mr. McGinnis, as always.
I was nervous after that.
Well, anyway.
Don't touch it.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna leave it alone, that's a good idea, okay. So, Mr., well, thank you, Mr. McGinnis, and let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. McGinnis, I did, you have been with us pretty regularly, but I didn't see you today, but anyway, okay. It's okay. So, Mr. Tedesco, was, do you have anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone from the applicant, and on behalf of the applicant, or are they submitting on your remarks?
I mean, I'll open it up to Mr. Cobell if he would like to just say thank you. I don't want to remove that opportunity from him, but I think, I think we're good, and in the spirit of succinctness, I would submit. But if Mr. Cobell or Mr. Burr want to say something, they may, but I'm not sure if they do.
All right.
Thank you. I think a simple thank you is probably all they would like to say, but I think I speak for them when I say they're extremely excited about this opportunity, and we would echo Mr. McGinnis's comments with respect to, this really does culminate in the conclusion of the complete redevelopment of the old Knox Boxes. And so, once this is approved and hope of the detailed site plan soon thereafter, we'll see the realization of that plan, and that's a wonderful thing. So with that, we submit. We thank you for your time and courtesy and respectfully request the approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. So, there's no one else to speak, and the board has no questions of anyone. Mr. Diaz Campbell, do you have anything else to add?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to the amended findings as outlined in applicant exhibit number two and approve preliminary plan 4-20017 and variation from Section 24-122A along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further modified by applicant exhibit number two. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Washington and seconded by Commissioner, Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey, what's your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner? Commissioner Geraldo?
Go down.
Okay, the ayes have it 5-0, thank you. At this time, the board is going to take about a 10-minute or so break and then come back and resume with item eight. Thank you. Okay, so. Okay. So the planning, our break is over, the planning board is back in session. I am looking at all five commissioners, and I'm looking at Mr. Hunt, and we're back here in the hearing room, as I said, with everyone, Mr. Kron, Mr. Flanagan, our planning board administrator, our planning director, and our technical hearing writer, and so, let me just check, we're about to take item eight. You threw me, Ms. Ewing, but you're probably on here for this case. Yes. So, Mr. Heath, are you on? The next item is-
Yes, Madam Chair.
It's Preliminary Plan of Subdivision 4-20002 Dobson Ridge, and Mr. Heath is present. Mr. Tedesco? Let me see.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. Ms. Ewing, you're present, clearly, okay. Ms. Ewing? I saw you, there you are. Can you unmute her?
Present.
Okay, wonderful. Is Mr. Sun going to participate as well, or you got it covered, Ms. Ewing?
Mr. Sun will be participating.
Mr. Sun, are you-
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Mr. Sun. I'm going to go on down the list, Charlie Howe?
Good morning, present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, Mr. Lenhart? Mr. Lenhart? I see you.
Oh, I'm sorry, present.
Okay, wonderful. Holly Tompkins? Okay, Griffin Burns?
Present.
Okay. Dion James Zanfrendino?
Good morning, present.
Okay, and is it Dion, probably?
It's Dion.
It's Dion, and I'm all the way wrong, okay, Dion. Anthony Zanfrendino?
Present.
Okay, and Michael Costello? Michael Costello?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, wonderful. We also have a memo from a citizen, Paul Hamilton. And we have a number of exhibits. We have, I don't have him signed up, but we have a memo from Citizen Paul Hamilton, which we will address, and it has six photos of damage to Matter Woman Creek. We have applicants written, we have a memo from Mr. Tedesco with a number of attachments to it. And then we have the Dobson Ridge Phase 1 rendering, and we have the Dobson Ridge mitigation commitment and several other items, and proposed revisions to conditions and findings. So, Mr. Heath, you are on. Oh, wait, wherever we are as of 1 o'clock, finish would be good, but wherever we are at 1 o'clock, we're breaking for lunch. Okay. Mr. Heath?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Antoine Heath with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number eight is a preliminary plan of subdivision for Adoption Ridge, 4-20002. The subject property consists of one parcel, which is to be subdivided into 196 lots and 16 parcels for the development of 196 single-family attached dwellings on 80.94 acres. As the commissioner or the chairwoman just stated, additional backup was provided prior to the 12:00 PM deadline on Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, which includes correspondence and exhibits from the applicant. Next slide, please. The site is located in southern Prince George's County within Planning Area 85A in Council District 9. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located on the south side of Lakendry Road, approximately 500 feet west of US 301, Robert Crane Highway, and borders Charles County to the south. Next slide, please. The subject site is located in the RT Residential Townhouse Zone. The properties directly to the west and east are located in the Residential Agricultural Zone and Commercial Miscellaneous Zone. The adjacent zones are CSC, the I-1, the I-2, the RE, and the RR zones. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This aerial photograph shows the site in its current condition, which consists of open space and regulated environmental features on the southern and western portion of the site. The abutting and adjacent properties can also be seen. Next slide, please. Site map shows the property which slopes toward the southwest. Next slide, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows the major collector McKendry Road highlighted in blue to the north of the site, US 301 Crane Highway is highlighted in orange to the east, and the arterial Cedarville Road can be seen in both red and green. The critical intersection of McKendry Road and US 301 is circled in red and will operate at an inadequate level of service given the proposed development. Consequently, staff is recommending a fee payment to the Brandywine Road Club as means of demonstrating adequacy of transportation facilities as further detailed on page 11 of the staff report. Next slide, please. Subject site is located in the Branch Avenue corridor and is subject to an off-site bicycle and pedestrian adequacy. Master plan trails on and adjacent to the site are shown on the slide. McKendry Road Shared Roadway Trail, highlighted in purple, is located north of the site. The Rosecroft Connector Trail to the north is in solid green, is currently the only existing trail adjacent to the site. The Timothy Branch Trail and Matter Woman Creek Trail, both shown in green dashed lines, travel directly through the site, and staff is recommending the applicant construct these trails within the project boundaries in accordance with section 24 dash 124.01 of the subdivision regulations. It is noted that the applicant is submitting a written response dated January 4, 2021, submitted prior, which provides objections to construction of the master plan trails, and staff will address this further at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide shows the locations in which the applicant proposes off-site pedestrian and bicycle improvements to the west. The improvements include crosswalks, ramps, and signage. Staff finds these facilities proffered by the applicant, and those recommended by staff will meet bicycle and pedestrian adequacy levels. Next slide, please. The overall view of the preliminary plan subdivision shows the proposed layout of the 196 lots and road circulation. The site is accessed from McKendry Road to the south. Next slide, please. This is a closer look at the preliminary plan. McKendry Road is shown on the right. The road circulation is highlighted in blue, and the townhouse sticks are highlighted in red. Adequate public facilities, including water, sewer, and fire and rescue facilities, are available to serve the subject site. However, police response times are not adequate for the site, and staff is recommending mitigation in accordance with the guidelines of mitigation of adequate public facilities. The applicant has provided a signed public safety fee mitigation agreement to address the inadequacy which is included in the additional backup. However, the applicant has also submitted a written response setting forth a request for the planning board to find that the property is adequately served by police facilities, which will be addressed further at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide depicts the site's pedestrian circulation. The proposed sidewalks are highlighted in blue, and the master plan trails Matter Woman Creek and Timothy Branch are highlighted in green. Next slide, please. This tree conservation plan shows the 48 acres of environmental regulated features known as primary management area, highlighted in green. This primary management area consists of both the Matter Woman and Timothy Branch Creeks, as well as the existing woodlands. The woodland preservation areas are highlighted in orange. There are also, there is one proposed environmental impact to the primary management area which is highlighted in yellow. Next slide, please. This is a closer look at the impact to the primary management area. The applicant will need to disturb this area to access an existing sewer line that will serve the property. Staff find that the impact to the primary management area has been minimized to the greatest extent possible, and approval of this one impact is recommended. Next slide, please. The applicant is proposing to dedicate approximately 52.41 acres of land to MNC PPC for the purpose of meeting the mandatory parkland dedication requirements. Environmental regulated areas of the site are shown in blue, and the area in orange consists of approximately 5.1 acres, continued to the PMA, which includes some areas of woodland preservation and specimen trees. The pressure of this county department of parks and recreation has recommended that the proposed dedication associated with the Matter Woman and Timothy Branch Stream Valleys meet the mandatory dedication requirements in accordance with section 24 dash 134a4 of the subdivision regulations. This project will be served by nearby active recreation facilities, and the Stream Valley dedication will promote conservation and preservation of natural resources. Section 24 dash 134a also requires that the master plan trail be provided when dedicating stream value. This requirement is carried forward in the staff recommendation. In conclusion, staff recommend that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision four dash two zero 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 two and type one tree conservation plan TCP 10132020, subject to the 19 conditions in the staff report. An exhibit was submitted by Mr. Paul Hamilton concerning impacts on the watershed, animals, and human health. In terms of impacts on the watershed, the applicant submitted an approved stormwater management plan which addresses this. Regarding impacts on animal and human health, the project has been reviewed in accordance with the regulatory environmental requirements, which are outlined in this technical staff report and found to be met. Mr. Hamilton also stated that the planning board hearing dates for this case were not correctly advertised to the community, so in regard to that, the site was posted for 30 days advertising the initial planning board hearing date of October 8, 2020. At that hearing, the case was continued to December 3, 2020. At the December 3, 2020 hearing, the application was continued to today, January 7, 2021. Since the prior continuances were met, provided, were provided to specific dates on the record, no additional posting was required. However, notices are mailed to parties of record regarding the continuance. Those were sent on October 15, 2020, and December 4, 2020. Mr. Hamilton signed up to be a party of record on October 26, 2020. The applicant also submitted exhibits which are located in the additional backup and raises two primary issues in staff's recommendation. The first being that the two master plan trails be constructed by the applicant. The applicant has stated that the requirements for mandatory parkland dedication have been met because they are proposed to dedicate over 52 acres of land to MNC PPC, which exceed the requirement for the four acres of usable parkland, which would be required under section 24 dash 134a1, and that through this development process, they have proposed to construct a trail given the proposed acreage to be dedicated. However, staff does not find the land proposed for dedication is usable for development of recreation in accordance with section 24 dash 134a. In accordance with section 24 dash 134a5, staff finds that the Stream Valley may be dedicated in lieu of active recreation. There is no minimum acreage of dedication defined under this provision for unusable land, and further, there is no provision which would allow the applicant to forego providing the master plan trail based on the acreage of dedication. As a separate and distinct matter from the provisions of mandatory parkland dedication, the construction of the master plan trail is required in accordance with pedestrian and bicycle adequacy requirements of section 24 dash 124.01 of the subdivision regulations. The applicant's response contends that the land area for implementation of the master plan trails is provided and that construction is now required by the transportation requirements of subdivision regulations. However, section 24 dash 124.01 sets forth that as part of any development project requiring the subdivision or resubdivision of land within centers and corridors, the planning board shall require the developer slash property owner to construct adequate pedestrian and bikeway facilities, to the extent such facilities do not already exist. Throughout the subdivision and within one half-mile walking or biking distance of the subdivision, and those adequate facilities shall include building, multi-use trails, bike paths, and/or pedestrian pathways and crossings. Therefore, staff believe that the recommendations set forth in the technical staff report regarding construction of the master plan trails within the subdivision is in accordance with subdivision regulations. The second issue raised by the applicant is the police response time inadequacy findings. The applicant contends that there is a mistake in how the response time test is conducted and that the test should be administered in a smaller area than the current area of the entirety of Police District Seven. This applicant provided a testimony given for another project in which discussion centered around possible changes to the testing, which the applicant anticipates will happen in the coming months. However, the applicant has not put forth facts pertinent to a mistaken response time test for this application, not for the reporting of the response times for the district, nor that test of the smaller area would yield different results. At this time, there has been no change to the requirement test contained, to require a test contained in the guidelines for mitigation of adequate public facilities, which requires the response times to be reported for each police district, and the council has now waived the mitigation fee for this site. Therefore, staff has administered the police response time testing in accordance with the current requirements contained in Council Resolution CR 782005. This concludes staff's presentation.
Mr. Heath, first of all, thank you so much. You really haven't been with us all that long, but you gave a very, very comprehensive, and you've done it before, but gave a very, very comprehensive analysis of this case, and I wanted to thank you for that and congratulate you for that as well. Because this case generates a lot of issues, and the other thing I wanted to comment on is the memo also from Mr. Hamilton, which, and I do want to address one part of it again. I know the stormwater management plan addresses his first issue. We did reach out to the Health Department, and so you could address the other items he raised on the impact on the animals and the health. And the other thing was improper notice, and it was imperative that you mention that we did have proper notice because there was an informational mailing on April 4, 2020 to the surrounding community and to the adjoining landowners, and there was an acceptance mailing on July 1, 2020. There was a sign posting deadline of September 8. Then we had the hearing on October 8, and then it was continued, and when we continue in the midst of the hearing, we provide the new date, which we did at that hearing, which then became December 3. And then we had another continuance, which was announced and approved, voted upon on the record until January 7, so there was plentiful notice. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, so thank you so very much. Let's see if the board has any questions of you at this time. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Duonner?
I have a question about, can you go to slide 12 from the pedestrian circulation exhibit? Because it wasn't entirely clear to me in the staff report. So, in the staff report, we're talking about sidewalks, which I think started on page six. It talks about how on McKendry, there's no existing sidewalks, which I think is true on the south side of the road, where the left side in this exhibit, there's no existing sidewalks. On the other side, there's a partial sidewalk, I believe, in some areas. But will they be making sidewalks on McKendry Road? Because it wasn't clear to me, this exhibit suggests yes, but in the staff report, it seems to kind of deviate, like on the internal network, it seems like there are, but I wasn't positive in terms of where on McKendry sidewalks would be put in place.
Maybe that was in oversight of my part. I did believe that they were going to provide those sidewalks along McKendry. Maybe Mr. Tedesco can clarify that, but that was our understanding based on the drawings that we reviewed.
Okay, yeah, let's let Mr. Tedesco mention that, because it wasn't clear to me where McKendry that would happen. I think it's a requirement, but I wasn't sure where it would be taking place.
Yes, it is a requirement.
Is it a requirement for just new roads, though, or also on existing kind of intersections right there? Because on the new network, then, yeah, you definitely have to have it on the interior sides, but then I wasn't sure on the actual existing part of McKendry, and then how high up or down it would go. If it'd go all the way down to the highway in this particular drawing, or actually just east all the way, and then how much it would go west, we're in this drawing, like how much it would go up. So, I can wait for Mr. Tedesco to mention that. And if you could just clarify it also in the staff report later on. I may have missed it, but if it's not clear, if you could just kind of add that in as well later on, that'd be helpful.
Okay, thank you. That was it for you, Mr. Duonner? Commissioner Duonner?
Yes.
For now, okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions at the moment, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Tedesco?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Matthew Tedesco of the law firm of... Matthew Hoesing here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. With me this afternoon, we have Mr. Griffin Burns and Ms. Holly Tompkins from D.R. Horton. We have Mr. Alex Villegas and Charlie Howe from Rogers Consulting.
Hold on, hold on a second. I do not, is Mr. Villegas signed up? I don't see him signed up, Mr. Tedesco.
My apologies. We have Mr. Charlie Howe here on behalf of Rogers Consulting. And we have Mr. Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Traffic Consulting.
Okay.
So, in the spirit of brevity, we went ahead and prepared, I guess, written testimony as, I guess, would be considered applicant exhibit one.
Yes.
We could have that entered into the record primarily to hopefully expedite this hearing somewhat in the sense of putting our position and arguments with respect to the two major issues in this case in the record in writing, perhaps maybe to save me the exercise of having to go through it orally, but in the spirit of, that would be somewhat out of character for myself. So, I do want to highlight a couple of items in that written testimony, if I may, Madam Chair.
Okay, so let me stop you for a second, just to say that we do have it, and if you can direct us wherever you want us, whatever page you want us to turn to, that's fine, and I thank you for submitting it. I'm not saying, you know, we may or may not agree with everything, but we may or may not, but we will wait to hear what everyone has to say, and I'd like, but thank you for submitting it, okay?
Yeah, I will say from the outset, you know, while it's unfortunate that the applicant and staff couldn't come to an agreement on two of these issues, on behalf of the applicant, we absolutely 100% understand and respect this staff's position. We understand their requests, and we understand their interpretations of the code, and although we disagree, we are not being disagreeable, if I can sum it up that way.
Okay.
But with that, Madam Chair, I do want to highlight a couple of things that were touched on in the staff report, but maybe could be elaborated a little more before I get into those two major issues. One, it's worth stating that this property, known as parcel 1A, it's about 80, almost 81 acres in size. It was rezoned from the RA zone to the RT zone in the 2013 Subregion 5 sectional map amendment. It was rezoned comprehensively, specifically for the purpose to accommodate medium to high residential density close to the edge of the Brandywine Community Center. So, this is a property that was comprehensively rezoned for the development that you see before you, which is medium to medium-high residential townhouse development in the RT zone. Through an anomaly, a few years ago, a bill was done to recodify the fact that townhouses are permitted in the RT residential townhouse zone, so these are permitted uses in a permitted zone and developed in accordance with those zoning regulations. I would echo your comments with respect to Mr. Heath. It's been a wonderful experience working with him, not only on this case, but other cases that he and I have had, and I would applaud and commend him for a very thorough... for a very thorough presentation and summary of the issues, which um, I, I thought he did a fantastic job doing. Um, all things being equal, with the exception of the finding and the conditions that we identified in our written testimony, we are in agreement with staff's recommendations. Um, so that leads me to kind of the biggest issues we have in this case. And, and one deals with, I, I guess, has become my favorite topic, which is the police response times in Southern Prince George's County. Um, we had a very lengthy hearing on that for a specific sign plan case back in June. Um, not the same type of issue, not the same type of argument, although the circumstances of which are somewhat similar in the sense that the fundamental problem with the police response time tests in Prince George's County, which is not really the planning board's problem, it's not really staff's problem, it's not, it's definitely not the applicant's problem, is the way that the law was written and then the way that the police department provides the times. Um, they ta- they test on a district-wide basis. And this property is in Police District Seven, on the border of Police District Five, which are the two police districts at issue, as you know. And the way that the numbers are provided from the police department, it's tested on the entire district, which is sixty square miles. And if you, if, if Mr. Flanagan can turn to the backup material, um, I'll give you the exact page number, because that's probably the easiest thing to do.
So you tell us the page number, although we have it too.
It's um, it's the backup page sixteen.
Okay, uh-oh. Wait, your backup?
My, yeah, there's a supplemental backup.
Okay, uh-oh, so mine's, mine are not numbered that way. So what, what is it, what does it show?
What is? It's the Police District, uh, District Seven map.
Okay.
So it would, it is supplemental backup, it's Flanagan, not the, not the backup.
Oh, I have it, okay.
So you get, those are numbered, so I, I referenced that number page sixteen and out of forty-one.
Okay. So, why aren't mine numbered that way? Okay. So I ha- this is it, yeah.
It's, it's exhibit two in my, in my written test.
Okay, got it. That I have.
So if, if we could maybe see the whole screen of that, I'll just orient the board to where this property, so that is, lost it.
We're coming back.
Yeah. Maybe zoom out a little bit so we can see the whole map. So that is um, that is the entire Police District Seven, which runs from Fort Washington to Acute Keats, the southern county line, over to Route 5301, along McHenry Road. The subject property is in the lower right-hand corner of that map. Um, within the, within the back, go up a little bit Kenny, to your right, to your right, down, right, up, 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 with a little bit more, just a hair, just a hair more, right there. That's generally where the subject property is located. The police response time numbers that you were provided and for which the analysis was conducted did response times in that entire area. Now, the law, um, 2412101E requires that the test, and this is the crux of our argument, requires that the test be done within the vicinity of the project subject to the plenary plan. There is no legal, logical justification, analysis that will tell you that vicinity is sixty square miles. And every other, uh, we provided a definite, a common definition for vicinity. As the board knows, when terms are not defined, we use their common definition. The common definition is nearby, neighborhood, proximity. And so our fundamental argument with respect to the police response times is that the test that, the numbers that you are provided and the test that's done to determine adequacy in Police Districts Five and Seven are not incon- are, are inconsistent with the subdivision regulations, which require a vicinity test. And so for that reason alone, we submit that the board should throw out that test. Um, and in, in so doing, we provided additional information for a project that was on the record, that's a mile away from this property, with respect to even the county councils and the county executives' position when it comes to this, this issue. And those examples and that information is replete with the fact that the governing body of Prince George's County agrees that the way that the test, the numbers are done and sent to you all is nonsensical. It's illogical, um, they actually use the word incongruous, uh, the outcome that's rendered. And so we provided those quotes prior to that information. The Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Public Safety and Homeland Security, uh, Mr. McGaw, who was the once-removed former police chief of Prince George's County, uh, provided testimony with respect to that, agreed that the way that the test is done is not a true vicinity test. It's incongruent, it's illogical, it's nonsensical. And so for that reason, we cannot rely on those numbers, we just can't. And so any finding that's made upon that information and that data, in our mind, um, is, is, is incorrect and a mistake, an unreasonable mistake at that. And to require applicants to pay over nine hundred thousand dollars in this case uh, in mitigation fees for something that, um, we can't rely upon, is not consistent with the code, uh, we believe is a mistake, and that the board should, um, alternatively throw out those numbers and make a finding based upon the information that we provided in support of that, which by the way, one of those exhibits, uh, in our, in our backup, in our memo, was from the county executive and from um, DCIO McGaw, which unequivocally indicated that the vicinity of, in this area, the vicinity which includes the Brandywine Court or U.S. one, uh, US 301 and 5 is and will for the foreseeable future be more than adequately served by police facilities. In addition, there's been partial funding for a new police station within this vicinity of this property, uh, albeit in Police District Five, which we think the board can also rely upon to determine that in, in actuality, um, there is no police response time issue uh, in Police District Seven or Police District Five. And in, in particular, this area is more than adequately served, um, by the, um, not because I say so, but because the county, the governing body of the county says so, and your reliance upon a test or for the administration of a test that doesn't conform, conform to the code, uh, is a mistake. Um, in response to, uh, and again, I, we're all, we're kind of all in this situation together. It's, it's not us versus staff, um, or even, you know, because we, we're dealing with what we're dealing with. But just in response to Mr. Heath's comments with respect to the applicant didn't provide any alternative, well, the applicant's not required to.
But.
Mr. Heath, Mr. Heath indicated, well, the applicant says that it should be a smaller area, and that, but no numbers were provided for a smaller area. With all due respect, that's not the applicant's burden. We're not the ones charged to administer this test. We're not the ones charged to provide you the data. Um, but I will submit to you that the data that's been provided, um, is, is a mistake because it doesn't conform to the, conform to the code, which requires an actual vicinity test. And so, um, that's a fairly brief.
Oh, go ahead, because I had a follow-up.
That's a fairly brief summary of, um, our written testimony, which we would further submit on. Um, but, you know, given the circumstances, the applicant did sign the mitigation agreement. Um, you know, I had put in our written testimony under protest because we don't believe the test is correct, we believe a mistake has occurred. But we understand the obligation of this board with respect to, um, the rest of the statute and the guidelines, and, and the ability to approve this plenary plan if, if you don't agree with respect to the unreliability of the data uh, and the inconsistency and the mistake that occurred in providing a test for sixty square miles when you're supposed to provide a test and do an analysis for the vicinity. Um, we did sign the mitigation agreement. Um, we do believe, based upon the testimony that was provided when CR 126 was adopted on November 17th, that the county will fix this mistake and, and hopefully alleviate this burden for all of us um, going forward. And if so, we would, based upon the mistake, look to have this matter reconsidered. Obviously, that will stand on its own and will have to be determined at a, at future time based upon facts and, uh, the, the actual statutes. But, uh, with that being said, Madam Chair, we think that there's evidence, uh, substantial evidence in the record for the board to make a finding of adequacy notwithstanding, uh, the misapplication of this response time test.
Mr. Tedesco, before you go on to other things here, take your sip of water, and before you go on to your other things, um, um, I appreciate your argument and, and, and your, and your legal arguments, um, and your practical arguments on behalf of your client. Um, and also for recognizing that it's not us versus them, or your client, or, or you and your client versus our staff. We, we find ourselves in a predicament, which you acknowledge, although you think we have a way out. Um, but, um, we find ourselves in a, in a predicament, um, because we rely on information that comes back to us from, you know, for instance, stormwater management approval. We don't second guess that, you know, or, um, or S.H.A. when they talk about the roads, or DPWNT when they talk about the roads. So that, we have information from the police, um, and, um, and, you know, I will turn to our council, not right now, but at some point to address this. But I don't know that we have the authority to say, okay, hey, police know you're wrong, and your test is, in your words, wrong, incongruous, and not a true adequacy test. And, um, um, so I don't know if we have the authority to, to, this board has the authority to, to, to just tell them that they're wrong. Um, and so that's our dilemma. I, I did hear what you said about, you know, thank you for putting in the mitigation agreement, um, albeit under duress, because you feel it's not necessary, but we, you know, we do find ourselves in a predicament. And you did mention proactively that when the, if, when we get, when the law changes, um, if and when that happens, um, and we get clarification, then you might come back for reconsideration, depending on what happens here today. And, um, which was my more immediate thought, because then you really, if, if that happens, then you really will have grounds for, on the basis of mistake. Um, but I don't know that we have that right this second, but I, but I just wanted to say I, I, I thank you for acknowledging at least the predicament that we're in and recognizing why Mr. Heath, um, presented it the way he did, even though you may not, you understand, but you may not fully agree. Okay, and no, it's not your burden to provide an alternative, but we, we, you know, we need to, um, figure out what our parameters are here. But I know you have some other matters to discuss, so let you go forward.
And again, we'll, we'll, we'll put a pin in that one. I, I just want to conclude that topic by, by just saying one thing in response to your comments, Madam Chair. And I thank you for those comments, and, and while I align myself with most of them, I, I would just say, in response to the, you don't have a choice, you take the information from the police department, I, I respectfully disagree in the sense that, you know, if, if we provided an analysis that required a vicinity-type analysis, and your staff felt that that, we were, we were including things, let's just say, for example, well beyond the vicinity, or, or not inclusive of the vicinity, they would say, go back and redo the test. Um, that's not being done. As far as I know, it's not being done, let me say that. As far as I know, it's not being done by special projects or staff with respect to the police department, saying, look, here's the subject property of these plenary plans, give us the response times within a mile or half-mile radius around this property. In this case, we would have two different police districts, and then do the analysis that way. That's not being done. And so inasmuch as you do have the authority, you, you have that authority because it's still the board's obligation to administer statutes and the regulations of the subdivision ordinance, not the police department's. And so when we know, and everyone is saying it, not just me, as, as a leading attorney in Prince George's County, I've been beating this drum since 2009 when this anomaly first occurred, um, that you may recall.
I do.
There, there has been a lot of talk, and, and hopefully a lot of effort, and I will just note, for whatever it's worth, I mean, as I speak here today, this issue is on the county council's retreat agenda that's occurring right this instant.
Yes, it is.
And so we're hopeful that all of us, I think, I think your staff is hopeful, I know I'm hopeful, the development community's hopeful, and I, and I would dare, dare say the county executive and her staff and the police department are hopeful, because right now, the perception is not the reality. The perception is that we have a response time issue in the southern portion of Prince George's County, and that's fundamentally not true. The chief of police said so to the district, to the county council on November 17th. There is not a response time issue. Is there a response time issue in an arbitrary ten-minute number? Because they test on a sixty-mile-wide basis in District Seven and a hundred-and-fifty-mile, square-mile basis in District Five? Yeah, because it's an arbitrary made-up number from 2005. So I do think there, there is the capacity for this board and, and the park and planning to go to the police department and say, stop sending us these numbers that are district-wide, because we can't rely upon them. And, and the last thing I would say is, the word incongruous, that wasn't my word. I took that from CR 126, which was the county council and the county executives' word when it comes to the outcome of the data.
Got it, I just.
So with that being said, with that being said, again, we hope that we have provided at least a reasonable basis for this board to, to, again, significantly question this test. Um, and perhaps, in your discretion, although Mr. Warner will tell us for sure, um, perhaps make this finding based upon the information that we've submitted outside of an actual data, because in all honesty, this is a mistake. And so relying upon it leads to a mistaken conclusion, in our opinion.
So let me just, let me stop you for a second, because I need to correct something that you said. I did not say definitively that, um, we have no authority to do anything about this. I gave you other examples from State Highway Administration, DPWNT, and the like. But I said that I don't know that we have this, that, um, and I, that I would be turning to legal counsel. So I didn't say definitively, number one. Number two, yes, you have been addressing this issue, a similar issue regarding police response times for at least the last ten years that I can recall. So it, it's come up several times, and I thought there was an improved, um, we, we had an approved test, but what you're, what is still not perfect, in your, um, opinion, and, and, and in the opinion of others. Um, and that's fine, and yes, the council is taking it up on their retreat as we speak, and our team is there, um, some of our planners are there, um, discussing this very issue in support of, of, of trying to get some clarity on, on police response time. So we, we do, um, support this issue. I'm just, unfortunately, you know, a plenary plan has a, a one-hundred-and-forty-day life, um, you know, we're in a timeframe within which we must act, and we're up against the deadline of that, that, um, one-hundred-and-forty days. So, um, we have a seven-day timeframe with one, um, seventy-day extension, and we're at the end of that prior to the council taking formal action. But I will, without making a definitive decision on this, which I can't make alone anyway, I, um, just wanted to correct the, the, your statement that I said we can't do it, because I don't know that we can do it, and I will be turning to counsel on that. I know you have other matters, uh, uh, other issues, so let you go forward.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be brief. Um, the, the other remaining issue is, is, as Mr. Heath articulated, is the applicant's position with respect to the staff's recommendation that the applicant construct the master plan trails, the Timothy Branch and Mattelone Creek Trails. Um, and I, you know, I know we articulated that in our written testimony, and Mr. Heath responded by quoting, uh, the code sections that staff is reliant upon. I, I, I understand staff's position and, um, its application of primarily section 24134A as well as, uh, 24121 and 2412101, um, if I cited those correctly, um, 12386, and then the, uh, 24124.01. I, I understand, uh, significantly their, their staff's position. Again, while we disagree, I, I hope I'm not coming across as disagreeable, because that's not our intent. Our, our intent really is to just put the facts before you and then have the board make its determinations and its decisions based upon your, your reading and understanding and application of those particular statutes. Um, in response, and to further supplement what we put in writing, um, turning your attention to one of the baseses for staff's position um, that the applicant must construct these master plan trails, um, they cite to 24134A4, which says, "When land is shown for preservation as part of a stream valley park on an official master plan, such land may be dedicated or preserved in lieu of active recreation, provided that the planning board finds that there is a reasonable amount of recreation in the general area, and that any trails shown on the master plan are provided." So we take that statute and just break it down, you know, the first thing is there's a reasonable amount of recreation in the general area. On page five of your staff report, uh, under finding five, the staff has made that recommended finding for you. It says there are several, not only reasonable, but several developed facilities in the immediate, not general, immediate area, and that they, that. not general, immediate area, and that they include the Rose Creek Connection Trail, Acapique East Park, includes field, soccer fields, basketball courts, loop trails, picnic shelters and playgrounds, and then also the SARC facility three miles away. So then it gets down to the word provided, and I think that's the crux of the issue, is how is it provided? And the applicant's position, which staff, you know, respectfully disagrees with, is they interpret the word provided to mean constructed. We interpret that word to mean provide sufficient land area to accommodate its construction, so that it's provided full. And we get to that point on this particular case because we have to kind of go back to the history. When this case went to S D R C, it was made very clear to the applicant that not only D P R, but other sections were going to be seeking dedication of the Stream Valley, which is about 48 acres of the 80-acre site, almost half, over half of the site, excuse me, for mandatory parkland dedication. Mandatory parkland dedication analysis is just what we went through. Under 24134A, the dedication requirement threshold based upon this density is four acres. However, under A4, which doesn't have a threshold acreage, Mr. Heath is 100% correct, doesn't have a threshold acreage, it just says the Stream Valley Park can be dedicated in lieu of active recreation. In other words, dedicate the entire Stream Valley, and you don't have to do anything else, so long as you all, the plan of board makes a finding that there's reasonable amount of recreation in the general area and trails shown on the master plan are provided. So the question really before you is, is dedicating the additional five usable acres outside of the 48 acres, is that providing, is that sufficient to provide the trail? We say yes, staff says no. Staff also cites 24121A5, 24123A6. As we said in our written testimony, you know, our response to that is that there simply is no requirement in those sections of the code that require construction. We believe that the board can make a finding of conformance of the master plan, which is really the genesis of those two sections, that this preliminary plan conforms to the recommendations of the master plan, because the applicant has gone above and beyond and not only dedicated the 48 acres, but also proffered and agreed after consultations with staff to dedicate an additional five acres on top of that for usable, where the usability of that was to accommodate these trails. So in so accommodating the dedication, we submit and request that construction not be somewhat of a double dip and asked on top of that in contemplation of the proper condition.
So let me make sure I understand you, Mr. Tedesco. So we talked about the word, what does provide mean, and some of the acres are, you know, are for the Stream Valley, but the majority of them are for the Stream Valley, but five of them are usable, you're saying, and therefore the trail...
So...
Okay. Are you saying the trail could be built upon those, on those five acres?
Well, nothing's been engineered, and that's part of the language in your staff report, and we agree with staff at the town and detailed site plan. We all have to do a further collective dive, but certainly, and again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Sun, but certainly when this was being vetted, there was the, hey, dedicate the 48 acres for the Stream Valley, okay? That makes sense, and that freed us from having to do any recreational facilities. Although this applicant is doing private recreational facilities on site, we're not doing them to meet a mandatory dedication requirement under 24135. The 48 acres dedication is mandatory dedication, the Stream Valley under A4. Once that proceeded forward, then the request, and we have emails, then the request was looking, we need about four more acres because we need to get outside of the P M A. We all agree it's better for these trails not to incur additional environmental impacts. The staff report at pages regarding the environmental impacts, at pages 17 through 22, is replete with the sensitivity of this particular area and its preservation being a priority. We all agree with that. So the request was additional acreage outside of the 48 for usable, that was the term that was used, to accommodate these master plan trails. Now, I don't want to get myself in trouble, but during those initial conversations, it was represented, although by the... Represented that parks would not be looking for construction if they got that additional dedication. Now, that's a bone of contention because of how it played out. I don't really want to revisit that, but in contemplation of that, we agreed to dedicate the additional four acres. That additional four acres expanded into an additional five acres. And so the additional five acres is what you saw in orange on your last slide of Mr. Heath's presentation. And so with all that being said, and again, you know, I understand staff's position, and I really think it just comes down to the board's determination is, does the word provided under 24134A4 require construction? We don't believe so, given the circumstances of this case, because we are providing that additional acreage to accommodate that trail. And the last point I'll make, and I'll stop, is the other statutory section that Mr. Heath indicated was in reliance upon the constructibility of the trail by the applicant, was 2412401, which is the bike pedestrian impact section of the code.
What section is that again? Okay, thank you.
And we have always maintained with staff, and again, this has been somewhat of a disagreement, but we would proffer it for the board's consideration, again, if the board is inclined to impose the construction on the applicant, under 2412401, we're required, under condition two, to dedicate 52 acres, so 48 acres of the floodplain, and then the five acres of usable space. We've got to dedicate that to the board, show that on a plaque, it's going to be conveyed to you all by deed. That trail then becomes an off-site improvement. We would stipulate that if the board's inclined, we could use B P I S funds under 2412401. I know staff is in disagreement with that, but I think the board has the ability to make that finding and make that conclusion. And then I'll conclude by just answering Commissioner Donner's question with respect to the sidewalks. Sidewalks along the property's frontage is required under our frontage improvements. That's regulated by D P I and our permits to D P I. And with that, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions. I would submit on our testimony here today, as well as our written testimony, and welcome the board's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tedesco. So let's see if we have questions. Madam Vice Chair.
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington.
No questions at this time, but I'm interested in hearing from our counsel, as well as our staff on these two issues, especially based on Mr. Tedesco's testimony.
Thank you. Okay, so then Commissioner Donner.
Yeah, I just have a question for Mr. Tedesco. I'm McKenry, then, in terms of like the definition of the frontage, like where you guys are going to put it in the sidewalk, is that going to go from like both ends of the parcel, like so where it ends on the west side, not quite all the way over to the nearby road, but then when it ends to the east side as well, it'll cover the entire frontage of the parcel? Or how far will the sidewalks extend?
Yeah, Mr. Flanagan, can go, if you could continue to scroll... No, Kenny, go back to where you were, just continue to scroll down to our slides you just had up, or if that's too much trouble, Kenny, I think it was the last slide in staff's presentation. So, yeah, I was looking for the render plan, which I guess was only in our backup, I apologize, but we can use this plan, it's fine. So if you see, Commissioner Donner, the areas in light blue and orange, that along the frontage of McKenry to the north, Kenny, if you go to the north of the road, to the left, left?
Left.
Left. So right there where the orange starts, that, from that point over to the west to where the blue ends, that's going to be land conveyed to the commission if condition two is adopted by this board today. So that land will not be part of our frontage, that will be actually commissioned property, part of its frontage. So our frontage requirements will be basically to the right side of that orange line to the C M zone portion, so basically the entire R T, since we don't own the C M zone portion of the property. So it'll be, I wish I could use my cursor, but it'll basically be where Kenny's cursor is there, go to the right if you would, and keep going, stop. Nope, back a little, right to there. That will be our frontage requirements with respect to a sidewalk. When the C M zone portion of the property comes in for development, they will be required to continue that sidewalk along their frontage per D P I regulations.
Okay, that's helpful. In terms of where the... So I'm fine with you, I guess I'll wait for Mr. Warner to talk about some of the police adequacy. I agree that it's kind of a bit of a mess, I just don't know if we have the legislative authority to actually implement some of the changes that you're suggesting. For the trails, though, I was interested kind of in your interpretation, I think is potentially a bit generous of 24134A4, because I don't see where a trail has actually been provided. I know that it's on the master plan, and by dedicating the land, you're certainly giving the land up, but you're not actually providing the trail, which is the last part, I think, of that, unless I'm mistaken, of that statute. And I just kind of, I was wondering, on the trail, I think it's almost in this exhibit right here, it would actually be in that blue area, right?
No, it would be in the orange area. The orange area, Commissioner Donner, if I may, I apologize, the orange area was the additional land dedication that was requested by parks outside of the primary management area for usable area to accommodate, hopeful future accommodation of the trail. So that orange area expanded from four acres to five acres, which is what's shown on this slide.
Okay, so you guys are giving the, you're dedicating that additional land then in there, but you're not actually building or providing the trail in its sort of physical form?
What we had negotiated, what we had discussed with staff is that we would be willing to provide that additional dedication, but we were not willing to provide it and construct it. And that's been the bone of contention in the case.
Okay.
So it's one of those things where, you know, you wanted it, we wanted provided, i.e. give us the land and also construct it, as opposed to provide it by just constructing it and putting it on an easement or something. So we took the position that we can provide it, but we don't want to provide it, meaning the dedication, and also construct it. And that's the summary of the issue.
Okay.
We didn't want to provide the land and the construction.
Okay, so I think where I'm getting confused some is using the word provide in too many places, because when I, my interpretation of the statute is dedicating the land, and if we use that just to signify that the land is now available to have a trail on it, that's different than providing the trail itself. Like you're dedicating the land, you're not providing the trail. And I think those are two separate concepts that the statute actually asks for, at least my sort of layman's reading of it. I mean, you may disagree and want to use providing in both instances. I think those are separate words that are not synonymous, but I'll let maybe Mr. Warner also chime in, because I could be wrong, both you may disagree with me. But I kind of view dedicating the land as what you've done, but providing the trail would actually be constructing it. And dedicating the land is independent or a different process of actually providing the trail. That doesn't actually provide the trail, that just, it just makes the land available.
And so the only response I would have to that, you know, I don't know where Mr. Warner is on this, but presuming if his interpretation is consistent with yours, the only response I would have to that, Commissioner Donner, would be, you know, we still, it still needs to be the dedication, the impact, and the governmental ask still needs to be proportionate, even if there is a nexus. And so our, again, our position, which not only is an equitable position, we're taking a position of equity here, give us the land, but also construct the trail, as opposed to just construct the trail, but you can keep the land, that wasn't proper.
So let me, can I...
So I would just say, I would just say that, and I'll conclude, Madam Chair, I would just say that, you know, in asking for the dedication and then asking to accommodate the trail, and then asking for the trail to be constructed, we think is not proportional to the development impact.
Okay, so let me follow up on that for a second, let me follow up on that for a second, and I'll go back to Commissioner Donner. But are you, so are you saying that if you had not been asked to dedicate that land, you would have been perfectly willing to construct the trail?
We never had that conversation, because when we initially had the conversation with staff, we were told staff wouldn't be, well, parks wouldn't be asking for it to be constructed. It wasn't until a subsequent meeting in September that it became clear that staff was going to be asking for both.
And is that because of two separate provisions in the subdivision regulations?
That's staff's position, yes.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Donner, I just wanted to follow up and ask that question if they... Well, you said it was never asked of you, but now that, is that a possibility, anyway?
Again, I think, again, staff will disagree with me, and I can appreciate that, but I think the compromise would be to take the dedication as proper by the applicant and allow B P I S as an off-site improvement to construct this trail be used. That, to us, as an off-site improvement, would be a workable solution, but I don't think staff agrees with that.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Donner, you proceed, and then at some point, we will hear from our own counsel, principal counsel, Mr. Warner, and we will also hear from Parks and Recreation. Okay, Commissioner Donner?
Yes, I don't think that there's, I mean, I haven't heard anything or read anything that there wouldn't be like a nexus, per se. Like I think there's definitely, with all these townhomes, or there wouldn't be a lack of nexus, I should clarify, because there's definitely a lot of townhomes that are going to be using the trails right here, you're building a huge other development there. What I haven't heard anything about, you said the proportionality or the cost of the trails, but I don't even know what it is. So it's hard for me, Mr. Tedesco, to know, is it too much or is it too little? Because I don't have any dollar figure in front of me, the only thing that I've heard is just sort of like a generic, oh, it's going to be too expensive to dedicate the land and then also construct the trail. But I don't have any actual hard evidence to know if that's true or not, and whether or not it would be roughly proportional or if it would be too much.
Yeah, I don't know if you're looking for a response from me on that. The proportionality analysis, again, is not the property owners or applicants' analysis to perform, it's the agencies exacting the dedication and the improvement to demonstrate that it is proportional. And again, I would submit, again, respectfully, that getting the dedication is a windfall and then when you add in the construction on top of that, regardless of what it is, we deviate from proportionality. That's our position, and I think it's been articulated.
So I know you said it, but I'm still, I'm struggling, when you make the argument that it's too much to do both of these, then I kind of wonder, well, how do you make that argument too much? Because we could say it's too little, and it's still, I don't know if the obligation falls upon us if you're dedicating the land to us and then claiming that it's too much or too, it's underproportional, there's just too much of a cost to also dedicate or to construct the trail, but then not actually tell us how much it would cost. It's difficult for me to gauge the validity of that argument, because to me, you haven't actually told us how much it would be or how much it would be exacting from you, if you wanted to use that term, because I don't know, you haven't provided any evidence about that.
Well, again, with all due respect, legally, it's not my obligation or legal requirement to provide that evidence. Whether it's even a dollar could be too much if there's not evidence of proportionality. And so our position is that there's nothing in the staff report, there's been no documentation, there's been no indication of the actual proportionality of both these exactions. And so it's not my legal obligation under the case law to then demonstrate that it's not proportional. It's the actually, conversely, it's the agency's obligation to indicate how it is proportional.
Okay.
And so the fact that it's going to cost anything for us to construct this trail under that analysis raises the question of proportionality. under that analysis raises the question of proportionality. All right, so let's, maybe we can turn to Mr., Mr. Warner after?
Yeah. I'm going to turn to, let me, let me just say how this is going to go, because it's pretty soon we're going to be breaking, and we are going to turn to Mr. Doherty to address the, the issue of proportionality and nexus. Did I, what did I say? Mr. Warner? Oh, Miss Gary, Mr. Warner.
Not me.
Yeah, Mr. Warner, sorry about that. And we're going to, and, and so we're going to turn to him for that, but I do want to get to finish with your questions. I think, I think Mr. Warner has to address that. And, and I want to get to Commissioner Geraldo when you're finished with your questions, Commissioner Doherty, and I think we will be breaking fairly soon. So, so Commissioner Doherty, I don't know if you're finished with Mr. Tedesco or not.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I've heard his position. I don't know if I would necessarily agree with it by, by him voluntarily dedicating the land and then saying that he doesn't have to judge the, the value of, of the improvements. If that hadn't happened, then he could have done a BPIS with those requirements. So I, I don't know exactly where I, I stand on that. I, I just do know that it seems pretty reasonable that there's going to be quite a bit of use coming out of this, the neighborhood and the areas being constructed to, to take advantage of the trails, and that'd be really nice for, for that development. So I think there's a nexus there. I just would turn to, I guess, Mr. Warner to talk about potential proportionality or other aspects of it. Yeah, so I'll just stop there.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have just one question, because I don't know, or I may have missed it, did Mr. Tedesco ever answer your question that if he didn't give the land or dedicate that land, that they would then build, they would build the trail?
He did not. He's, he said he had, they hadn't looked at that.
That's what I thought. So what is the answer to that question, Mr. Tedesco?
I'll get it while we, it looks like we're going to take a break. I'll get it at the break, Commissioner Doherty. I don't have an answer for it. Again, my response to it was what we proffered to staff, which was, we'll dedicate and construct if we could utilize BPIS as our BPIS improvement. That was what was proffered, was not acceptable. I'll have to get that question answered at the break, Commissioner Geraldo. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now, let me just do this. I'm trying to figure out if this is a good time to take the break. So that might be a good time for you to explore that, and, and Ms. Ewing, I need Parks and Rec to, to think about what their needs are during this time. And I think, although I said we were going to break at 1:00, this is probably, since we've asked our questions for now, this is probably a good time to take the break. So it's about, not quite, it's about five minutes to 1:00. Let's say we come back at about 20 minutes, 20 minutes to 2:00. It gives us about, maybe about 45, let's say quarter to 2:00, okay? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So the planning board isn't recessed until 1:45. Thank you. The planning board is back in session. We got the chief of development review there, and we got our full complement here in the hearing room. We got our Principal Counsel, David Warner, present. I would like to just check and make sure that we have everyone we need for the entire case. So I see, I see Mr. Tedesco. Mr. Tedesco, are your folks on? They're really here if there are any questions. And then we have the, the Dion James Zanfordino?
Yeah, she's, she's around.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And Anthony Zanfordino?
I am, but I have a work call that starts at 2:00. That should take me about, about 10 minutes or so.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe 15.
Okay, so let me just do this. Mr. Costello? Michael Costello?
Yes, I'm still here on, on phone call.
Okay, wonderful, okay. And Paul Sun?
Here, here, Madam Chair.
And Sonia Ewing, Sonia Ewing. Okay, now, okay, wonderful. That, I think that's pretty much everybody. I know we had your folks, Mike Lenhart. I don't know that we need all of your folks at this point. I guess I could, Mr. Tedesco, but what I, if you don't mind, Mr. Tedesco, do you want to take Anthony Zanfordino, since he may have to go? Do you, do you mind at that point, Mr. Tedesco?
No, Madam Chair, we would, we would allow, have no problem with allowing any of the citizens that are here, have been dealing, listening to this, to, to speak, and we can come back and conclude. I think we're a lot farther than where we were when we exited, so I'm happy to.
That's always a good thing.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a further pause and let the citizen speak and then come back and hopefully conclude.
Okay, thank you. So let's go with Anthony Zanfordino first.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, so, so as a citizen, when we look at this project, right, and I've been a resident of Brandywine pretty much for the last 17 years. We're, we're in a position where Brandywine is going to be overdeveloped. Looking at different meetings I've attended over the last couple of months, there's about four approvals that the planning board has given for development in Brandywine, which is all in the same location. So let me head on a couple of points that were made. So that, so when the Rose Creek Trail was mentioned, yes, the Rose Creek Trail is built. The Rose Creek Trail is about the size of walking across the street from where the pond is to the county administration building and probably almost to the post office.
Okay.
In Upper Marlin. Part of it could not be completed because of the land, and we've had that debate with Park and Planning of why they couldn't finish the proposed trail. What, what we see is that things will get approved, but they'll never get finished. The sidewalk on McKendry, which is only on the Rose Creek side, only goes halfway up. There's a bridge on McKendry that DPW has not had the money to reinforce, and this goes back to when they were approving surface mining for Chaney Enterprises a few years ago. Over the last recent few months, we've noticed an increase of water on McKendry, which the, I guess it's the side facing Accahay Road is part of a flood plain. So right now, basically, the Rose Creek development has noticed an increase of water, which we can't determine whether it's the underground piping or something, that is now starting to basically make our, our neighborhood wet. So for example, my backyard right now, based on construction and other things that have happened, is half of it stays wet. If it rains on Monday, it doesn't dry out until Thursday. When we look at traffic?
So hold on a second. You think, do you think that, you think that, that water is partially based on new construction in the area? Is that what you're saying?
It's, it's new construction. It could be the construction that was done for our development.
Okay, okay.
But, but, but someone's going to need to look at it, because again, most of McKendry is, is part of surface mining.
Okay.
Even what faces the Dobson property.
Okay.
When, when we talk about traffic, and I've been monitoring the traffic since we got on this call, even during the pandemic, right, where folks are supposed to be at home, 301 is basically in orange or yellow for the entire three hours of this call. And it probably will start to hit red. When you look at the school system, the closest school to that development, from a high school and middle school, is Gwyn Park, which has not been, had any improvements in at least the last 17 years.
Do you have a copy of the staff, do you have a copy of the staff report? Did you pull that or read it online?
I did not.
Or did you read it? Okay, okay. All right, go ahead.
So, I mean, the, the school, which is Brandywine Elementary School, if they're going to build a new one, I mean, that's still five miles. Brandywine Elementary is five miles from this development. When we come to the basic things of voting, our polling place, which, which used to be Gwyn Park Middle, then got changed to Brandywine, now I guess it's going to be the Southern Maryland Center.
Okay, I, I got to stop you for a second, because I, we, this board is limited in the things that it can address, particularly in a, in a preliminary plan. So there's things that we can address in a site plan and things that we can address in a preliminary plan, but the schools issue, we are unable to address because of the, there's a surcharge fee that, that would have to be paid for developments.
Okay.
So, so we, we don't do what's called an adequate public facilities test for schools because the law changed, and so.
Okay.
And then same thing, and voting, and voting doesn't come under us at all, and, and where you vote, that's, that's something we can help with. But perhaps we can, perhaps we can with the flooding, though, in terms of the stormwater management, someone could take a look at it, okay?
Right. So I mean, so, so let me, let me address the question about the police, right? So, so the Clinton Police Station, which is the one that serves us, is approximately 11 minutes from this location. Back when Brandywine Crossing was built, they promised that a substation was going to be put in place. Today, that substation still does not exist. So, so concern from a resident is that things will get approved, and it will eventually go to the county council and they'll approve it. And then they'll waive everything that the citizens need for their particular development. You know, I mean, when I look at CHAS, where they just waived, waived, one of the, the county executive just waived something, I think, for policing. So, I mean, the concern is somebody has to look at the overall plan, and maybe this isn't the right board and it's going to continue to go, of how it gets done. When I look at the question about the trail, so McKendry has a bike trail. I guess it's not clearly marked, because I've driven, I rode, had my bike on the road, and it's not. We, less than a year ago, we had a person killed by a hit and run on the bike on McKendry Bridge. McKendry Road is accident road. To quote Smeco, they know exactly where it is because they've had to come back and replace poles because of so many accidents. And the trail that I know that you guys have requested, again, if it doesn't get built with the development, Park and Planning is going to come back in, and there's going to be a reason why it doesn't get done when it should be done. So, I mean, as a resident, I'm, I'm very concerned. We're getting ready to put almost 200 units in a heavy traffic area, and the infrastructure is not going to be in place to, to have it done.
Okay, so let me say this to you, because I know you have to go. I thank you for your testimony today. It matters to us. There are things that we can address and things that we are not able to address because they're outside the province of this board. But I, in the future, I would invite you, whenever there's a case you saw, either you were notified by mail or you saw the posting or, or you signed up some way, please try to pull the staff report, because a lot of the analysis will be in the staff report, which includes the transportation analysis, you know, stormwater management, and so, and so many things of that, that nature, and the trails. Sometimes we have their plans, like you mentioned, for the bridge and some other things, or trails on the books, but with competing interests throughout the, the county, sometimes there aren't enough finances to do everything all at once. Not to say that they, it will fall off the books, but not all at once. And our budget gets improved by the council, and it's very hard, because that, you know, there's a finite pot of money, and, and they try. So I can't say what happened to the Clinton Police Station, but the traffic analysis is in here, and at some point, you may be off the call or you may be back on the call when we can have Mr. Lenhart address this, the, the transportation. But there is a detailed analysis in here. And I'll have, I'll ask Mr. Tedesco to address the issue of the stormwater management, because whenever, there's got to be a stormwater and management concept plan, and so that what's being built here does not exacerbate or contribute to any flooding over there. Now, I don't know that it will address existing problems, but it may. It may help. But they're not required to address existing problems, but they are required to address potential flooding from the development of this site. So, but, but, you know, we can get you that information, and you can pull, and, and I can have Mr. Tedesco address the stormwater management. And it seems like you, you're, you know, you have someone else with the same last name, so maybe if you have to sign off, you know, Dion James Zanfordino can fill you in on some of it, okay?
Yes, she will. She's just upstairs for me.
Okay, okay. So thank you so much. And then I'm going to, and so you, so, okay, so you can step off now for your call.
I don't believe Mr. Zanfordino gave his address.
Okay, can you, can you please provide your address, Mr. Zanfordino?
Sure, it's 7112 Desert Peace Court.
Okay.
Brandywine, Maryland.
Okay. And I think you'll just be gone for 10 minutes, so I believe, I believe we'll still be going when you return. Okay?
Yeah, I'll be able to hear you guys.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And Mr. Costello, are you on?
Yes, I'm still here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Do you want to go forward or? Do you have the same?
Yes, I definitely.
Okay. Or do you, or would you like to hear Mr. Tedesco come back? Because he said we're closer, we're better off than we were. Would you like to hear him first?
Definitely, sure, that's great.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco?
Thank you, Madam Chair, in, in advance. Thank you, Mr. Zanfordino, for your testimony. I'll try to go through each of those as Madam Chair directed me to, but before we get to that, I did want to circle back up with the board in response to questions that were raised by the chair as well as Commissioner Geraldo. During the break, we did have time to circle up with the applicant and with staff, and I'm happy to report that I think that we are in agreement that if the 5.1 acres that was shown in orange is not to be dedicated, that the applicant would take on the obligation to construct the trail at its location to be determined at the time of detailed site plan. I don't want to speak for staff, because they probably needed to put it on the record, but that's my understanding. So in response to those questions, the answer is if the 5.1 area is in orange, as shown on your screen, is not to be dedicated, the applicant would construct the trail on site. And, and really, what that does, Madam Chair, is, and I think in some of the emails, and I don't want to belabor it, but in some of the emails and the back and forth, there was a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of competing interest and desires, and we, we all did work really well together to try to compromise on as many things as we could, and I think this is evidence of further compromise. But when the additional usable acreage was requested, it did further condense the developable area of the site with stormwater and everything else that's required, which really is what was the linchpin with some of the things that, the trail section was asking for, was trying to maybe see if there's a way at site plan to integrate this master plan trail more into the development. But with the constraints of the 48 acres and then the additional 5.1 acres, and the site is getting smaller, and it, and having to provide the stormwater that's required, mitigation practices, it just got to a point of constraint. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll hear that staff is in agreement that the 5.1 acre doesn't have to be dedicated, and in which case, the applicant's in agreement to construct the trail on site. That would result in a very minor modification to one of the conditions, which I can talk about now, or you can wait to hear from your staff, and then I can come back.
Well, I, I would like to know when you, if you had a conversation with staff, did you mean planning staff or Parks and Rec staff or both?
I, if we'll disclose, I had a conversation with, with Ms. Connor, who I understood had a conversation with Parks and Rec.
Okay, thank you, okay.
But I don't, I don't want to.
But that's fine, that's fine. I'll, I'll turn to them, okay. Okay. All right, we'll come back to that. All right, we'll come back to that, um, okay. Um, so that's good, okay. Um, so, Ms. Connor? I see you've signed on, Ms.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Cherry Connor, uh, for the record. Um, I did have a conversation with Mr. Tedesco regarding, uh, that proposal and, and also a conversation internally with all of, um, the staff, um, Mr. Heath and the Parks Department, and we are all in agreement.
Wonderful, okay. Okay, very good, thank you.
Can I ask a quick, quick question?
Wait a minute, who is this, this?
Commissioner Adorno. Commissioner Adorno.
Oh, there you are, okay, thank you, okay.
Sorry. The, Mr. Tedesco, are you, would you be able to, if, if this remains your land, would you be able to, like, talk the trail and at least have, like, an entryway into your subdivision somewhere?
Well, I, I think that's part of the discussion, you know, and that's why we agree with the, the condition at the time of detailed site, because this is RT Zone, Commissioner Adorno. The RT Zone does require a detailed site plan, um, for development. So, the, all those details, the location, the alignment, the type of trail, its interaction with the development, all that's gonna be further vetted at the time of site plan. Uh, we've gotta go back and sharpen our pencils, but I think, yes, all, all that's definitely on the table.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great if, like, maybe in that lower, kinda, L corner or something, if there was, like, a way for you to get in and out of the subdivision instead of having to go all the way up to the street to access it. Um, but, but, yeah, I'll look forward to, to that then.
Yeah, we will certainly look at that.
All right, and thank you for the compromise of staff.
Thank you so much, okay. Um, okay, so you, go ahead, Mr. Tedesco, okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't know if it would be appropriate, but, um, just for the record and for the motion maker, uh, and I'll defer to Ms. Connor to wordsmith any further, but I think we, I think Condition 2, where it references the 50-plus or minus acres, that would have to be reduced to, um, 47 or 48, plus or minus acres. And then Condition 3, where it says, um, "On Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission property, unless an alternative," I think that language would be deleted, and it would simply say, um, and I'll speak slowly, but Condition 3 would say, "The applicant, in its heirs' success or sense of signs, shall construct Timothy Branch, Madam Woburn Creek Master Plan Trail on site at a location to be determined at the time of detailed site plan."
Okay.
And I think with that, um, we, I, I think I can represent with that the applicant's in general agreement with, um, the, the language of the conditions. Um, obviously, still submitting on our position with respect to Condition 19 and the mitigation, but I think that record has been established, uh, for future, hopefully, purposes.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Tedesco. Um, Ms. Ewing, was there anything you wanted to add on behalf of the Parks and Rec Department? I don't see Mr. Sun, maybe he called in, okay. You, who's?
For the record, Paul Sun with the Parks Department.
Okay. Okay.
Um, yeah, we, we can agree with the applicant's new proposal.
Okay.
Um, I, I, you know, I appreciate they're willing to compromise.
Okay.
I think it's a very good thing for the project. Um, one thing I'll bring up is that I think it's very, very good to have this trail implementation and process. Because I think with this housing being through the rear of the house, with this housing that's there and the trails being in the rear of these proposed homes, we've had a lot of issues in the, you know, in the past.
Yeah.
Developing trails after the homes are constructed.
Okay.
So I think this is a very, very good win-win for the whole project.
Thank you, Mr. Sun, appreciate that. Okay. Um, okay. So now, the, the only remaining issue then was the issue of the police, but you have, uh, you've made your, you've preserved your record, Mr. Tedesco. And, um, um, and what I will turn to, either, depending on what happens here, if we stick by our position, um, we, you would either, and, and this goes forward, you would either come back for reconsideration, reconsideration, or maybe it might not even be needed, depending on if they have a waiver process or something, we'll see. Um, is that correct, Mr. Warner? You weren't ready for me, huh? Okay. Okay, you're muted, you're muted, you're muted.
I know, you have to cut me out. Thank you, ma'am. I know what I was thinking, now, it's a beautiful day out, but, um, no, I was looking in and, um, um, if you wanted, we just got the legal opinion on the police mitigation issue. I can do that right now.
No, no, my question was, my question was, if we go forward, well, we can come back to you because we actually did have some questions for you, but, but if we go forward with the police um, conditions as, as indicated, and, and you, and maybe you will, should give an opinion, but if we go forward on that, um, with, with the staff recommendation, if, um, the, if the law changes and they come back, do they have to come back for reconsideration? Or, or would a waiver suffice?
Two things. One, the way the condition's written, if they go get a waiver, they don't have to come back for reconsideration because their condition says unless a waiver is granted.
Okay, thank you.
We don't know what the new law might say, so you can't, you know, look clear and go like, "Well, if the law says this," then, you know, we don't know what the new law says, but I'll just briefly, you know.
Okay, let me do this. We need everybody else muted because you're, you have some feedback.
Yeah, I can't hear him, I can't hear you at all, Mr. Warner.
Okay.
You might be too close to your microphone or something, but I'll go back on mute.
And mute, and mute me too, yeah.
How is this?
Not a whole lot better, but a little better.
I think you, you are too close, so back up a little bit from your microphone.
Do, like, Mr. Warner, do you have more than one thing, do you have more than one thing going on? Do you have more than, more than one device?
No, not at all, exactly.
Okay.
Still a little fuzzy, I don't know.
Well, look, basically, basically, what, basically, what I will tell you that he said, Commissioner Washington, the part that I did hear preliminarily was that if, in fact, we go with the staff recommendation, um, it appears thus far that the applicant would not have to come back for reconsideration, um, um, if the law, if the law changes, how, um, because a waiver, because the condition reads unless a waiver is granted. But what he did, but Mr. Warner did offer a caveat, and he said, "Unless the law says something else that we haven't anticipated." Okay, but that's as far as he got for now.
Can you hear me any better now? Because I'd like to get some context to that.
Okay. Well, just try, we'll just have to deal with it. Okay, so go ahead, Mr. Warner.
Okay.
And mute me.
I wanted to, to say that Matt, uh, Mr. Tedesco, as well as almost everybody else agrees, including myself, that that test is really a reexamination. And for many of the reasons that he pointed out, the law may well be something that could be improved upon. The only thing, the candy board that ties our hands is that while the law says vicinity, the District Council adopted a resolution saying that we had to use police districts. So even if, uh, Matt provided some other way of examining, excuse me, Mr. Tedesco, provided another way of examining police response times, that may even be better. The county, the District Council has told us we have to use police districts.
Okay.
I think he said, Mr. Warner, that basically our hands are tied by law with regards to what we do in the police district. I mean, is that the essence of?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I be heard?
Um, yes, Mr. Tedesco.
You're muted.
Oh, yeah, I'm muted, I'm muted. Thank you. Okay.
Thirty seconds, may I be heard?
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, you couldn't hear me.
Yeah, thank you, and, and Mr. Warner's free to call me Matt at any time, I appreciate that. Uh, but I would agree, and I wanna just thank staff because the, the language of Condition 19, um, was revised to include unless a waiver is provided. And I, and I would agree that we don't, I think everyone agrees that, that the law's likely to change or that some other legislative action is going to occur because it, it is flawed. Um, and I would agree that the council resolution says what it says with respect to vicinity, which I think is another reason why it's flawed. Um, we simply, again, not to beat a dead horse, but simply just wanted to preserve the ability that if anything other than a waiver is granted, um, i.e. the law changes in a way that it's actually more accurate, more reliable, um, and that determination is that this property, as, as we would expect it to be, would meet the response times at, at that time in the future. If that is the factual scenario, we want to lay the foundation to come before you for reconsideration. And I think that, that has been fully articulated, and the record's quite clear on that. And so I would thank Mr. Warner, uh, with, for his comments, I'm gonna align myself with them.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Um, you have preserved the record. Um, rest in peace, horse, and, um, and, okay, so, Mr. Warner, you've been very good, so I, looks like we are there. So let me, we have one more, uh, we have two more citizens to speak for now. Okay, so, Mr. Costello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, I'd like to thank everybody for, for having this, and I, I'd like to definitely second most of what Mr. Zanfordino said earlier.
Okay.
Um, but, but my, my two biggest issues, um, um, that I'd like to bring up this, to find out what's going on, um, are McKendry Road. Um, as Mr. Zanfordino said, there is a ton of traffic out on 301 throughout the entire day. What a lot of people have figured out and are doing now is they're cutting, um, out that 301 traffic by turning, uh, down Acakeet Road and then cutting through McKendry Road to get back on the 301. McKendry Road is extremely small, you know, single-lane road, supposed to be 25 miles per hour. Adding, uh, 100-plus homes at the end of McKendry Road is gonna do nothing but increase that traffic. Um, there are accidents weekly on McKendry Road. I, I literally walked down my door the other day, and there's a red truck just flipped over on the side. Um, there are constant accidents out here. Adding another development is great, I'm, I'm, I'm very glad to, to, to see another development kind, kinda come up and, and improve the area. I, I'm not pleased that, um, after reading your staff report, which, which I've got a three-inch, uh, three-ring binder here that I print out everything that comes out on this, and do my best to read it and understand it. Um, but in reading that, I just see no plans or updates for, for, for 90% of McKendry Road and the amount of traffic that will be increased, um, on there. Um, and, and that's extremely concerning. I, I live directly on McKendry Road. My house is probably one of the closest houses to McKendry Road, and, and I have people flying by there daily doing 60, 70, uh, dump trucks flying through there. Um, adding another community is only going to increase that amount of traffic, increase the amount of accidents. Um, yeah, and, and, and putting a bike path on there, I, I would have to say you'd have to be crazy to ride your bike on McKendry Road. Um, I, I don't, you know, I don't want my kids anywhere near out front of my house the way people drive on that street. So, I'm extremely worried about that. Um, and then my second issue, um, is probably with, with D.R. Horton, with, with the land that they own, that they're planning to build Dodson Ridge on. Um, from my understanding, or looking at their website, they also own, they, they adjoining acreage and other properties on there that they're not building on yet. Um, you know, I, I give a concern about what they're gonna be doing with that property because that is a, a free dumping ground for, for, for people who know about it. And there is trash dumped there, um, weekly. Um, I, I, I can, I call 311, they, they probably hate me by now, but I call them probably every single week for the amount of trash that gets dumped on, on D.R. Horton's vacant property, um, that is on McKendry Road. So, yeah, those are my two biggest concerns. The amount of traffic that, that's gonna hit McKendry Road, this little tiny back country road, um, that, that is a, a major shortcut for everybody, and now we're adding 100-plus homes there, it's gonna definitely increase the traffic. And, um, I'd like to hear what, if anything, D.R. Horton plans to do about their vacant properties that they currently own that are just collecting trash on, on a daily basis.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. First of all, um, thank you for participating today and for staying with us and for printing out the staff report and putting it in your binder with all the additional backup, because that's the kind of citizen we'd like to see, who is fully engaged and, and tries to amass as much knowledge about a proposal as possible. So that's wonderful, and we thank you for that. Um, so, now, D.H. Horton does not have to build on that property immediately, but what they can do, and we have representatives here on the phone, uh, uh, participating today, um, and Mr. Tedesco can speak for them as well. But what we do want, um, we, we do need for them to maintain their property and not have trash and things dumped on their property. Um, and so, they, they can be cited. And, um, the Department, D-PY, Department of Permits, Permits, Inspections and Enforcement, can be called, and we, as a government agency, can assist with that. Because sometimes agencies are, are more responsive to other agencies, so they can assist with that. And the same thing would apply to the police, um, for the, the people speeding through McKendry. Speeding down McKendry, so, um, I just, so those are some things that we can, you know, maybe help with. And, and also, I'd like for, um, Mr. Tedesco, when you come back, to address the stormwater management. I see in the staff report, you, you have an approved, um, stormwater management, um, concept plan. And, um, so those are the things I'll need for you and your client to address. But thank you, Mr. Costello, and, and then also, um, Mr. Tedesco, as this is a preliminary plan, maybe your expert, Mr. Lenhart, can address the transportation concerns. They're detailed in the staff report. But that will be after we hear from our final speaker, okay? Um, let me see if the board has any questions of Mr. Costello at this time, and then we have one more speaker, and then we can have, um, the applicant try to address some of these issues. Um, Madam Vice Chair, any questions of Mr. Costello?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but thank you, Mr. Costello.
Commissioner Adorno?
No questions, um, just to clarify, I don't think there's actually a bike path on, on, on the road right there. I think it, there is gonna be potentially some signs that the applicant was gonna put up, um, that you probably saw on the staff report, um, but there's not, like, a, a specific bike, bike path or lane necessarily on, on the road right there. But thanks a bunch for, um, for, for being so informed and, and for definitely jumping in and printing everything off and being organized, because it makes us, it, it makes this whole process a lot nicer. When, when people are informed, they're asking good questions, appointed, and, um, and they're interacting and participating fully, so, appreciate it.
Amen, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna call, um, Diane James Van, Zanfordino?
Hi, um, good afternoon. Um, I'm pretty much going to echo kind of what my husband said and Mr. Costello. Um, I used to be a board member for Rose Creek Community on McKendry Road. And, um, the traffic is a nightmare. Um, they have signs there for trucks because, uh, to not come on that road because, you know, the communities got together and said it was too dangerous. There were accidents every week, like Mr. Costello said. Um, you know, as a board member, we've had, uh, cars in people's yard. Uh, you know, we, uh, you know, went to the council about the problems we were having because the kids had to cross the street for the school bus. Um, it's just, it's dangerous. And I know when I first reached out and I spoke to Mr. Heath about the plan, and he explained a lot of what, um, you know, was going to happen, I know there was a discussion for a crosswalk. Um, and hopefully, the transportation person can kind of address that because, um, I think that would be dangerous if it's just a crosswalk and not, like, a circle, uh, to kind of somehow slow down the traffic. They are driving 65 miles an hour on McKendry. We can't even really walk in our communities or walk to the other communities. You literally have to run across the street because the, the, this light, line of sight, it, it, there's curves and you can't see. Um, so it's very, very dangerous. And I know I've met with, um, you know, the Department of Transportation when I was on the board, you know, several times, requesting speed bumps and various things to kind of slow people down. But now, you know, it's just really a shortcut that people use, and it's extremely dangerous. And, and on top of that, that whole area, this whole area is a water table. So, we're all, and because of the surface mining, there's always just water on the road. And it's, um, so much flooding, which makes it even more dangerous because the trees are always coming down and, and people are speeding, and it's just, you know, there are a lot of things that need to be addressed on this road. Um, I know currently Rose Creek is in discussion with, um, the county because of an underground culvert that, um, there's problems with. And our, our developers did not have a discussion with the county when they were developing this neighborhood. So now, no one wants to take the blame, but most of the homes that are in Rose Creek surrounding the water areas are flooded, their backyards are swamps, uh, you know, because of all of the, you know, sediment being pulled from the soil and the construction and that sort of thing. So, um, there are a lot of. thing. So there are a lot of concerns for the residents that live here. I would also ask Transportation, when, you know, looking at, why was there not a discussion of entering the cars off of 301? That would be some sort of alleviation to having people, that many cars, coming up and down McHenry with all of the problems that already exist on McHenry. So, you know, those are my concerns. I'm pretty sure most of the residents on McHenry kind of feel the same way. We're overwhelmed with the traffic. We can't do anything about speeding. Neighbors are putting up signs, begging people to slow down. And, you know, we've met with the county in the past, and nothing has really been done. And now, we're dealing with this, you know, this damaged underground culvert, and we're being flooded out. And, you know, it's difficult to try to get the county to kind of help us and have something done about it. So, you know, that's kind of like why we felt it was necessary to make sure that we spoke up about, you know, the major concerns here, so that you're aware of them ahead of time. And if something happens after, we can go back to you all and say, hey, you know, these are the things that, you know, we're concerned about. I'm not opposed to necessarily having a community, but there's got to be, you know, some assistance for those that already live around here that are kind of, you know, being affected by this overdevelopment, particularly surrounding this, like, immediate area.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. James Zanfordino. And let me just, let me do this. I'm going to see if there are any questions, and I'm actually going to start with Commissioner Geraldo, because I was remiss, and I didn't afford him the opportunity to ask the question of Mr. Costello. So, Mr. Geraldo, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is, has the community asked DEPI to install speed bumps on McHenry?
I think that's what-
I could even upset. Yes, we did. When I was on the board, which was 2013, I think, 2013 through 2015, we met with Department of Transportation several times, and we requested that. We were told that we would have to have 80%, I guess, of the people living on McHenry at the time, to agree to that. I think that was what we were told. And it was something that we were not adverse to, kind of like going around, but it really was a Herculean effort, considering at the time, we were trying to more or less address the surface mining issue, and that's, it might be more of a priority. So I can pretty much guarantee, most of the people that live here would love to have something like that in terms of safety. It's really treacherous just trying to cross it. And, you know, the buses no longer stop and let the kids across the street. You know, that was something, I think, that was addressed when we were, you know, meeting the council and zoning and, you know, the county Mel and all of those people back then. So, you know, that safety part is not so much an issue with the kids, with buses, but just living here, if you live directly in McHenry, it's very, very dangerous.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would encourage you to revisit that, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Geraldo, did you have any questions of Mr. Costello?
No, my question was going to be generally down as well with regards to speed bumps.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, Madam Vice Chair, are there any questions?
No questions, but I would like to thank the citizens for coming down and sharing their concerns and their opinions.
Okay.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
I'm sorry. Can I bring up something about-
Wait, wait a minute. I need to know. Hold on. I don't know who's talking. I don't know who's talking.
This is Mike Costello. I had also looked into, inquiring about getting speed bumps on McHenry Road. I was told, my wife was actually told too, and she checked into it, that we were under the impression that it's a secondary road, and they would not, under any circumstance, do any type of speed on that road.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
That is correct. That's what we were told also.
Yeah, you mentioned that. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now, where was I? I was asking for questions. Commissioner Washington, did you have any questions?
No, I didn't have any questions, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the citizens for coming out.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner-
For coming out, probably, I should say.
Yeah, I know. We're saying that. Out of habit, that's what we say, but we mean participating and staying engaged. Commissioner Duoner?
I didn't even catch that slip of the tongue.
Okay.
But I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the board has no more questions of anyone. Okay, Mr. Heath, do you have anything else to add before we turn it back to Mr. Tedesco?
No, I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tedesco, you get to close it out.
Thank you. And I'm going to try to be brief, but you've tasked me with responding to a number of items, so I will do that-
So you're going to blame it on me? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tedesco.
Very succinctly, if I can. With respect to the traffic, you know, I've been lucky and fortunate enough to represent a number of clients in the Brandywine area and have worked on a number of developments in the Brandywine area. And as all of you know, I'm a product of this area. I haven't grown up just up the road in Marlton. So, you know, this particular part of the county is near and dear to me. Traffic on 301 has been an issue my entire life. It's not an issue because of development or a presumed overdevelopment of Brandywine. Maryland 5 and US 301, just like Maryland 210 and Maryland Route 4, are lifelines of transportation into Washington, DC from our adjoining counties. And so, as you all know, the County Council has initiated laws and regulations and resolutions with respect to how do we balance the implementation of our general plan, which was adopted most recently in 2014, which designates Brandywine as a center, therefore earmarked for development? How do we balance that against the impacts that our neighboring jurisdictions have with bypass traffic that use these arteries every single day to and from their residences outside the county? And the solution, albeit for the folks that live in Brandywine probably don't feel the same way, but the solution was for a payment and establishment of a road club in the Brandywine area. That road club has existed since 1992 or 1993, although its inception was discussed back, I think, in 89. I'm sure Tom Asaw would tell me, correct me if I'm wrong on those dates, but I know it was in the 1993 subregion 5 and subregion 6 master plan. And so this development will be no different than every other development since that time. And the County Council in 2017 adopted CR-9, which is referenced in your staff report, which further obligates and mandates the payment of fees into the Brandywine road club to mitigate the traffic impacts. And the subdivision regulations specifically provide for the utilization of a road club to meet transportation adequacy. So there is no adequacy issue with respect to the legal component of this application, albeit certainly, I'm not standing before you or the citizens of Brandywine suggesting that there isn't a traffic issue on 301 and 5. But a lot, the vast majority of that traffic is outside of the Brandywine area, outside of Prince George's County. With respect to the school, Madam Chair, I would align myself with your comments and your staff's findings with respect to that issue. The schools actually in this area are not even at capacity, but understanding Mr. Zanfordino's comment was more to the maintenance and upkeep, this development will be required at the time of voting permit to pay a school facility surcharge on top of a public safety surcharge, and currently on top of a police response on mitigation that we hope will be disposed of. But nevertheless, it will be required to pay the public safety surcharge and the school facility surcharge. That school facility surcharge based upon a proposed development is over $3 million. So it's not an insignificant amount of money that will be paid at the time of permit for this development for the schools. Getting to another comment just briefly about property, D.R. Horton, the applicant here owns, the applicant has not closed on this property. It is a contract purchaser for this property, but is not currently the owner. Moreover, the property to the west of this is not owned by D.R. Horton. It's actually owned by the current property owner, which is the Walton Company and its affiliates. Nevertheless, certainly familiar and aware, we've had problems on other fairly large properties in the Brandywine area with illegal dumping, to the point where I have been asked and been in communication with the police department to set up cameras or other types of remedies to try to alleviate some of those issues. But we will take it back to Walton to make them aware of the community's concerns with respect to potential possible illegal dumping on some of the larger areas to the west. And we will work with them as we are in negotiations to be contract purchaser of that property to the west. So we will take that up with the owner. With respect to the issue that you specifically asked for, Madam Chair, related to stormwater, your staff report at pages 17 through 22, so five pages, are extremely detailed and well-done with respect to the environmental findings associated with this development. And just to reiterate some of the high points of that is, yes, you are correct. We do have a stormwater concept plan approved. We have minimized the impacts of the PMA. The minimization of these impacts meet the woodland conservation requirements on site. We have, all woodland conservation requirements are being met on site. Our stormwater concept plan approval includes two submerged gravel wetlands, five microbioretention facilities, and a bioswale, which exceeds the guidelines for the manual of site design. I will also note that although stormwater is being treated through those facilities, it will discharge south into the stream valley, not north. And so nothing associated with this development will impact or exacerbate whatever ongoing concerns the Rose Creek community might be having with respect to stormwater, as water runs downhill, not uphill. But nevertheless, we are exceeding those requirements. I also just want to highlight, although it's not in your staff report, that this property was farmed, excuse me, it was a horse farm. I can remember my entire childhood driving past it being a horse farm. And we did do a preliminary loading study associated with the phosphorus and nitrogen runoff associated with that. And this development actually will decrease the phosphorus runoff by 42% from the current levels, as it was utilized as a horse farm, and decrease by 31% the nitrogen levels that are currently, right now, without any stormwater, without any modern environmental site design, going straight into the Timothy Branch and Mattelwombe Creek. The, yeah, and I'll just conclude by saying, again, the only impact to the primary management area is .02 acres, and that's just to connect to the existing sewer line on the east side, excuse me, sorry, on the west side of the development site. Everything else is being preserved. And so, you know, we feel very confident in both DEPI's review of the stormwater, which did not require a 100-year attenuation, but we do have a fee in lieu. And we also have those facilities that this property exceeds the requirements, in which, for those that may not know, Prince George's County within the region has some of the most robust stormwater regulations that some of our neighbors do. So with that, we are very confident that the stormwater is being not only treated for quality, but also quantity control. And this development, believe it or not, is actually an improvement to phosphorus and nitrogen loading based upon the historical use of this property. The only other thing I would comment on, and I think Mr. Costello analyzed or mentioned it correctly, is McHenry Road, along this frontage is a master plant collector, master plant collector, excuse me, a major collector on the master plant transportation. As it runs west, it turns into a primary road as it continues farther west. But there is a bifurcation of it on the master plant transportation. So I don't want to get into the weeds with respect to whether speed bumps are appropriate on McHenry Road. As a master plant, as a master, excuse me, as a major collector, I don't foresee DEPI approving speed bumps. But perhaps in the future, when the road is further developed pursuant to the master plant transportation, not only will that facilitate maybe opportunities for redesign, but also facilitate opportunities for the local community to access points north and south without having to get on to Maryland 5 and 301. And that's really the crux of the master plant transportation in this area, because Maryland 5 and 301 is a freeway serving St. Mary's and Charles County in that traffic. The master plant transportation consterns a lot of arterial roads, major collector roads, and primary roads to be developed or constructed or dedicated with these development applications, so that the local community can access other points without having to travel on 301 and 5. And you are seeing that. It's taken time, but you are seeing that through another project that you all know, our representative's village, the Timothy Branch. He was building the arterial roadway through the middle of that project. Another project you all approved recently, Calm Retreat, is continuing to build and extend 855, so that that will actually give the Chasford community alternative access, other than just the current one access it has today. And as other development inconsistent with the general plan comes to fruition, envisioned by the Brandywine Center, more of these secondary, I'll call them, roads will be dedicated and constructed to hopefully obviate or alleviate some of the ongoing traffic concerns on Maryland 5 and 301. I think I've addressed everything. Certainly, Mr. Howes here from Rogers, if he wants to elaborate more on the stormwater, he's the expert, not me. I know enough just to be dangerous, and I'm able to read your staff report, which was, again, extremely well-done when it comes to the environmental impacts. And Mr. Lenhart's here to further elaborate more on any traffic, as I'm not a traffic engineer. So with that, Madam Chair, I want to thank staff again. I want to thank you all. I want to thank the community members for being here. I remain open and willing to meet and talk with any community member going forward. So I open that up to anybody that would care to talk about it in greater detail. And I appreciate staff's consideration of working out the trails. I think that's, I agree with Mr. Sun, that is a win-win solution, and we're happy to have reached it. So with that, Madam Chair, we respectfully request the board's approval of this preliminary plan.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. That was your summation. I am actually going to call for a vote. Before I do that, I want to thank everyone for participating. I want to, I thank you, Mr. Tedesco, for indicating that you are willing to meet with the citizens. Depending on how the vote goes here, you will be back, because this is the preliminary plan. You will be back for a site plan. So it would be imperative and helpful if you had a conversation, particularly with the three who have signed up here today, and any others who may wish, to have a conversation. And with your experts to talk about some of the transportation concerns and the stormwater management, some of the other things, which you have actually addressed significantly. But some of it is very, very detailed in the staff report, which I know that some of you have, and Mr. Zanfordino said he did not have. But if you pull it, you can see our analysis. But it would be helpful. You've offered to meet with them, and so that's greatly appreciated. And please continue to do so, Mr. Tedesco. So I will now call for a motion. And when we, depending on the motion, I might have one or two things in the discussion, because I do want to make sure that when we, when we call for the motion and discuss the findings, we not only have the findings in the staff report, but we have matters that were presented in today's testimony, and we also have the exhibit from Mr. Hamilton. And those matters have, in fact, been addressed with regard to the notice, with regard to the animals and health, and with regard to, oh, the watershed, the stormwater management. So I do want to make sure that all of those are taken into consideration with regard to our motion.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'll make the motion, but just to be clear in your comments, are you including that as part of discussion?
I can, make your motion, and I'll see where it's needed. I can, depend, make your motion, and I'll see where, if and where it's needed, okay?
Very good. Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve preliminary plan 4-20002 and TCP 1-013-2020 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report. And I would ask staff to ensure that the appropriate findings and conditions be amended to reflect this board's approval of the applicant constructing the trails without the need to dedicate the land, and I believe it's approximately five acres. And I would also note as part of the motion that Mr. Tedesco mentioned the likely implicated conditions would be number two and number three.
So, second?
We have three seconds, okay. So we can just pick one. They're pretty much in unison. Okay. So, under discussion, I would add that the motion maker add to the fact that we are adopting the findings of staff and after analyzing the testimony presented today and in writing by Mr. Hamilton, if that would be part of the basis of our decision.
Absolutely.
Okay. And also that the trail that was a condition was also, you said this, but I want to make it really clear for the record, that the applicant then proffered total agreement with that on the condition that the other five acres, five plus or minus acres was removed. But it's the applicant's agreement I want on the record, okay? So that's all I had under discussion. And the motion maker accepted that in the second or any second. Whoever speaks up first.
Accepted.
Okay. So, okay. Okay, so we have Commissioner, we had, look, Commissioner Bailey, Vice Chair Bailey, Commissioner Duoner, and Commissioner Geraldo. So pick one, and they all agree with the motion and the findings. Madam Vice Chair?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duoner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. The ayes have it, 5-0. That concludes our business for the day, I think, but I will obviously ask my question. But before I do, I want to take a moment to thank everyone. I also want to take a moment to say, again, Happy New Year. The events of yesterday were alarming, and I won't go through this whole thing about it because I could. But I will say, hold on to hope. 2020 has been a very rough year for so many ways, not to mention all the, I mean, hundreds of thousands of people who died in all the cases of COVID and all the horrendous things, and yet there were so many moments of beauty and awe and kindness and wonderful gestures. And we can't get, let that go. We can't lose sight of that in the midst of all the horrific things that took place. And so hold on to that and never, ever, ever lose hope. And I do believe that, you know, it's going to be difficult. I would suggest that we all fasten our seat belts. Change doesn't happen overnight. But I have to hold on to the fact that hope is on the horizon, and we will have a better 2021. It may take a while to get there, but hold on to that hope and never let anyone, anybody, any entity steal your joy. Okay. Where are you? Mr. Hunt?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
There are no additional business items before the board today. Thanks, everyone. Happy New Year.
Thank you, everyone, to thank you all. And Happy New Year, and planning board is adjourned.
Thank you. Also, Ryan didn't fix my microphone, so I wanted to test it out before we got off. But hopefully, you hear me better now.